There it is.
Go ahead.
Good, Sarah.
Dominic Spermileno.
Go ahead.
Dominic Spermileno, alternate.
Dominic Bonnichi, alternate.
Brian Condon, commissioner.
Bruno Maiani, commissioner.
Robert Westlin, commissioner.
Rick Schultz, Tom Planer.
Sarah Stroud, recording secretary.
Thank you. This is a time for general public participation. If anyone in the chambers or online would like to address the planning and zoning commission about any items not on the agenda tonight, for items on the agenda, there'll be a separate public participation period. So if anyone's here to address the commission in person, please raise your hand. Anyone online that would like to address the commission in public participation? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, I'd like to record to show Commissioner Ambrosi has arrived. I'd like to make one change in the order of the public hearings. I request solely engineering to go first tonight. Is solely engineering here? Due to scheduling problems, I believe you have to leave. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just switching the order.
So this is SEP 2023-03, file number 1651A, 127 Main Street. This is continued, SEP 21623. And for the applicant?
Chris Palowski from Miami, applicant solely engineering. I apologize, the computer's...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just enter the additional exhibits. Exhibit number three, conservation commission comments. Exhibit number four, engineering comments for the revised plans. And that is all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I have this as a public. This is listed on here. It's a continuation.
This is the opening?
It should be the opening.
This is the opening, yeah. That was a typo. Please disregard that.
Yeah, typo. Is this?
Yeah, this is an open.
We have 161A, 127 Main Street. I'll read it. Planning and zoning commission Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing in accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, March 2nd at 7:00 p.m. or sooner after will be a hybrid meeting with in-person attendees located Monroe Town Hall. SEP 2023-03, file number 1651A, 127 Main Street, special exception permit application for proposed multifamily site development and associated activity located at 127 Main Street in special development district one. Accessors map 012, lot 9, Pondview LLC, owner's engineering LLC representative. Notice was published in Voices twice Wednesday, February 15th and February 22nd.
Thank you. Now, Rick, did you get all the exhibits?
Yeah, I just wanted to include exhibit one, which is the application and plan set. Two is engineering review and comments. So we have a total of four, Mr. Chairman. Are you ready to be shared, Rick?
Yes. I apologize, the computer's out of battery. It was plugged in or not, but it looks like it's got four minutes left to pattern, so we...
Thank God.
Thank you, quick.
I would talk really fast if... You're down to three minutes.
Is it plugged in on the back of the computer?
It's... Oh, Howard. Okay. I think we're plugged in. Sorry. Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Solely, licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering. We're very excited to be here this evening. First, just some housekeeping items. I want to turn it into green cards for the proof of mailings. So we're here tonight to talk about the special exception application of 127 Main Street. We have a number of members from our team here. The floor is Chris Palowski from my office. Holograph report for property is here, and Jason from SLR, who's going to be here to talk about some of the landscaping and architectural elements of those projects. I'm going to start this kind of high-level overview, refresh everybody about the project. Chris is going to run through some of the technical aspects of the site design. I'll talk about traffic. Jason will talk about landscaping and architectures. And then we're here to answer any questions the commission may have. So just to orient everyone, this area is an area of the town on Monroe. This site is located at 127 Main Street, Route 25, north-south along the west side of town. This site is just north of the town line in trouble, a little bit closer. So here is the subject property outlined in yellow. Out front is the Dunkin' Donuts. Dunkin' Donuts is located here. Duchess is located right across the street. There's a gas station on the corner. And this site has been subject to a number of approvals over the years with this commission. The commission recalls, we created a Main Street by district, which created a mechanism for the MDD. We've gone through and we secured a zone change for this property for the MDD. We have a wetlands application pending. We're expecting to close that at their next meeting next Wednesday, March 8th. So because of that, we do expect this meeting to stay open. So we wanted to present the project to the commission, answer, get questions, feedback, hear the comments from the public, and then we'll be back at the next meeting. We have a law regulation amendment that was considered at the last hearing, which just had some very minor changes to special development language. And that was primarily in regards to comments that were raised from this commission when the STD was initially approved. And now we're here for the final step, which is the special exception permit application for the more detailed review of the actual proposed site plan. So just some high-level review. So the project, what we're being proposed is 196 residential apartments. The project is by Continental Properties, which owns a number of apartment projects around the state of Connecticut. And these are just kind of some pictures of some other properties which they've developed in the state. And it just kind of shows some of the really highly amenitized features that the projects include. Here are some pictures from some clubhouses. I believe this might be at the Mark and Shell. There's some pictures from some projects in Rocky Hill. And it really, they want to create a product that's something that's really unmatched in the town of Monroe, in the current building. To remember the second thought, what it means. High-level proposing, seven residential buildings, total of 196 units with a clubhouse, highly amenitized. We're going to go through that in great detail later in the next... And actually with that, I'm going to pass it over to Chris. He's going to go through some of the technical aspects of the site plan and the design, and then I'll be back before you a little bit later.
Thank you, Kevin. For the record, my name is Chris Palowski, the civil engineer with Solely Engineering. My office is located here in Monroe. Here to talk about Pondview, also known as 127 Main.
One thing I wanted to point out there is you forgot to introduce yourself as a licensed professional engineer.
Thank you, everyone. I did pass my professional license recently, so now I have a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So again, thank you, Kevin. We are expecting to continue this hearing. We did submit plans to you all recently. I don't know if you have them in front of you or not, but they are updated on the site show here. We had some comments from wetlands, as well as some town interior comments, so we did compile our response and submit those ahead of the wetlands meeting next Wednesday. So again, the plans you see before the screen are reflective of the most up-to-date plans then. As Kevin alluded to, we had seven proposed buildings, totaling 196 units. It will be 392 parking spaces. Part of that, 53 spaces will be deferred for the option of future to be constructed if demand is there. There was a question last time regarding parking. I know, Commissioner Condon, you visited the mark, and we're wondering about how the spaces would be allocated at Pondview or 127 Main Street. So the way it works is every unit is assigned one parking space from the get-go. So there'll be 190, 196 units that will automatically have one parking space. Then the tenants have the ability to purchase an additional parking space. So that will vary depending on how many there are. At the mark, there is only 1.8 spaces per unit. Here, the number is higher. We're at two, like about 2.1, somewhere in that range. So our number of parking spaces per unit is higher than the mark. Also, at the mark, there is a less, there's a lesser amount of what we call potential user parking spaces. So if you're a prospective tenant, we have a much bigger area. We provide about three to five times the amount of visitor or guest spaces, if you will, compared to the mark. So if you're interested in renting a unit here, you can park and use any of these 13 or 15 spaces in this general area, where the mark only has three that are designated for that opportunity. Also, there is a series of designated visitor parking spaces throughout the complex as well. So again, that's the balance of if you don't rent an extra space, there's a lockment that's allocated for visitors or guests that you may have. And in addition, we also have garages here that's part of this new SEP application that's different from what we showed you guys in previous year's application. So I did just want to address the parking concerns and how they would be kind of allocated throughout this project. Thank you. So Route 25 or Main Street is located here. The current drive is paved, and then it stops at about this point. Dunkin' Donuts is located to the right here. That access is proposed to be maintained. All this pavement is going to be maintained. We're actually going to be widening it and adding a right turn lanes out of the property to make it easy from a traffic standpoint. So once you pull into the property, I hope we'll be agreed to plan next. But the site actus drive brings you right up and focuses you right in on the clubhouse. That'll be discussed as well, and all the beautiful architectural features of the clubhouse. There's a traffic circle or rounded bough located, and you can proceed here to the right and left, where there's a series of gates. There'll be a gate here, and there's also a gateway up past here. This area is the visitor parking area, as well as potential tenants. The clubhouse is accessed here. There's also a pull-off space, so if say you wanted deliveries or anything of that nature, I'm not sure, but they'll be able to just come in and circle and drop off potential passengers or visitors, if you will. There's seven apartment buildings, so 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. There's also 1, 2, 3, 4 garage buildings. We have a maintenance and trash building located here. Then we have a pool with a series of pool houses. There's also like a pool maintenance building, series of pergolas and all types of landscape and hardscaping features throughout the project. We also have a putting rain. There's other amenities, which will be discussed later on this presentation. So again, 196 units, seven buildings. We did add elevators to the buildings. That'll again be discussed later. And 392 total parking spaces, with 53 potentially to be added in the future if demand is there. So this is the proposed rating and drainage plan of the site. So the site is at about elevation 340 down here. We're going to climb up into the site on the drive and kind of come up on top of the hill. If you've been by the site recently, it's just about finished in terms of grading, rough grading down to the pad, so you can see what that final elevation is going to be like. It's about 30 to 40 feet up from the road, if you will. So we're going to come up to a flat area here, steadily climb a little bit more, and then the units and everything will be stationed, or will be graded at a little bit higher elevation than the clubhouse. So the grades, just for reference, is again about 330, 340 down at the street. We're up at about 365, 364 at the clubhouse, and then the buildings are a mix of around elevation 370, 372, depending on which building, just to create possible drainage. And then as we proceed towards the south, we have our stabilized rock face shown in this dark line here. And then it climbs and varies in height from 10 to 40 feet, depending on its highest point. And then we have a 25 to 30-foot landscape buffer in between the property lines. In terms of stormwater, everything on site was designed in accordance with 2002 Connecticut Stormwater Manual. We have two above-ground basins, so there's going to be a very large basin located here as you come up the site drive to the right. Then there's another smaller basin located off to the southeast corner of the property. We also have an underground system to treat water quality, provide water quality treatment, and also reduce peak flows. There are wetlands located on the site. It's limited here. Here, there's two pockets that are connected by a dising pipe that runs underneath the site drive. We are before wetlands, as Kevin alluded to. We're hoping to close that out next week. So we did want to provide a section just to kind of show what the grades look like on site in relation to the building. So again, if you climb the drive, you can see our site plan rendering here. This is section AA. So if you are looking this way, towards the building, this is existing trees and vegetation. The property line is about here. Then we have sloped down a three to one with double evergreen screening on top of the hill. Then there is a six-foot-high fence, and there's another shelf, and then you have the rock face. Then we have an additional row of evergreens down the bottom of the rock face to provide some landscaping features. Then there's a good 35 to 40 feet to the building from the rock face. Then you have the building, front of the building, and the parking lots associated in the front. So again, this side of the section is located here. It's existing wood and vegetation. As you move towards the property line, within our limits of disturbance, we have a double evergreen row, additional shrubs, fence, and then the rock face with an additional evergreen planting row at the bottom of the hill. So in terms of soil improvement, sediment control, as you are aware, the site was previously approved a number of years ago. Construction has been proceeding underneath that approval. The site is just about at the rough grade, if you will, so the pad, if you will, is just about done. So for the soil improvement sediment control plan, there's a number of items we have here. The silt fence, the hay bales, and mulch firms are already in place, but we'll be adding additional ones. There will be additional sediment traps constructed. The anti-tracking panel of construction entrance will be extended up into the site, and then construction will proceed. So this would be phase one, which again, most of the site has already been rough graded to this. The rock face is pretty much 90% established at this point. And then we'll proceed to phase two, which will include the construction of the buildings, the site drives, and everything of that nature. Obviously, the basin is also beginning to get constructed and finished in this phase, and the project will close out. So from the utility standpoint, there currently is a large aquarium water main running in Route 25 or on Main Street. We're going to be extending that main up into the site. It's going to perform a loop, so it's going to climb up the site drive, go around the site here, and back and connect down into its connection point back on Route 25. There's a series of fire hydrants. The site has been designed to provide adequate access for emergency vehicles. There's supposed to be a series of fire hydrants. Every building will be served by public water. There's also a series of utility poles. We're going to be running electric telephone and cable up through Site Drive as well underground. Each building will have an electrical transformer, so you can see, for instance, in between here, we have a transformer pad which will feed all of these buildings. And then there's other various transformers throughout the site. As you know, in Monroe, there is no sewer, so the site will be served by septic. So each building will have its respective septic fields. All of those have been designed in accordance with the Connecticut Public Health Regulations. So there's a series of septic fields here, and a series of septic fields here. One thing I did want to mention is there's currently an existing conservation easement on the property. We are not proposing any work within that conservation easement. It was previously disturbed as part of the previous approval. We're going to restore that conservation easement. We do have a letter recognizing the fact that there will be no harm to the conservation easement from Ken Kellogg, the first selection, because the conservation easement is home of the town. So again, that conservation easement is located in this area, where you don't see any activity taking place. There's also a conservation easement along this well. Before proceeding with landscape plan, I did want to touch that we are currently showing a sidewalk all along throughout the property, then it comes down the drive here and runs along across the frontage of Route 25 or Main Street. So in terms of landscaping plan, in conversations with wetlands, we've added all native plants within the upwind view area. There's also a healthy mix of native plants scattered throughout the project site. There's a robust planting plan and buffering around all the edges. So you can see here all the trees that we've added to the landscape plan on the wetlands edge here. There's also another series of evergreens and plantings along this well in here. We also have a series of plantings and buffer screenings along property lines here. We have the double row of evergreens in addition to many shrubs along this property line here. And again, there's residents who live on this side of the property in this general vicinity. This property is commercial, and then this entire side over here is open space, a delicate property. So you see the heavy screenings on the residential sides here and here. And then we're for wetlands, some of the neighboring residents that live on this side of the property. It's hard to find the mouse, but here, we asked if we could add buffer plantings to the development, so we added a robust row of buffer plantings along this edge of development here. So again, we have plantings throughout the site, throughout the parking islands, foundation plantings surrounding the buildings. They're mainly planted scattered throughout. There's all native plants in the upwind view area. At the end of this presentation, or when I'm done talking, Jason from SLR Consulting, our licensed landscape architect, he's going to talk about more of the plans we have on site, especially in and around the clubhouse and amenity areas. Finally, from a lighting standpoint, we have a series of pole lighting throughout the site. Everything is designed to be dark sky compliant. We are also, we're sensitive to the wetland areas that are on the project site. So the lights that are proposed along the site drive on this side of the facility in this area will have shields on them, so that way the light reflects back down towards the pavement and not towards the wetland area. Again, everything is dark sky compliant. There's a series of pole lights proposed throughout the site. There's shields on the lights, on the pole lights to even help further reflect that light away from any sensitive areas. So that is all I have for the presentation. I'm going to turn it over back to Kevin to discuss the traffic.
Thanks, Chris. So as part of our application and as part of our previous STD application, we did prepare a comprehensive traffic impact study to understand the potential impacts of the proposed development. As the commission recalls, the project was previously approved for a, or the site was previously approved for a commercial shopping center that generated a significant number of trips. Part of that, there were a number of potential improvements identified, but for this project, thankfully, the proposed development is a very, very minimum from a trip generation standpoint. We have 196 units. From a trip generation standpoint, we'll compare it to the J-PAC study. First thing we do is we conduct accounts to understand how the existing area roadway network operates from a level of service standpoint. We then build that traffic volume just based on anticipated background traffic growth, and then we look at utilized rates published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers to determine how many new trips we think would be put on the roadway based on our proposed development. For development like this with 196 units, that's a very modest increase in traffic. We anticipate it's almost 73 trips in the morning peak period. That's 17 entering the facility, 56 leaving the facility, and then in the afternoon peak period, that afternoon rush hour, a little 77 trips coming in on this development, 47 entering, 30 exiting. One of the things that benefits our site is that we have access through directly to Route 25, through that driveway just south of Dunkin' Donuts, but we also have an access drive that goes out to Purdy Hill here, which goes behind Dunkin' Donuts and the gas station. That also provides access, direct access to that signalized intersection. When we actually apply our new trips to the network and distribute those throughout those two driveway options, we're able to establish that we will not have an adverse impact to our traffic operating conditions through the area. As part of this project, this also has a review and approval process with the Connecticut Department of Transportation. The previous application and this application, we have to go to the Office of State Traffic Administration, which we've actually started that process. They also review our traffic impact study through additional layer of review from a traffic standpoint. So this commission can have that comfort that not only is this being reviewed by you guys, but it's also being reviewed by the Department of Transportation. So they'll concur that our project will not have an adverse impact, and we'll go through that process with it. With that, I'd like to actually invite Jason to come up, talk a little bit about the safety, and then he's going to run through some of the architectural components as well of the clubhouse and some of the buildings themselves.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commission members. My name is Jason Williams, licensed landscape architect with SLR, formerly Mylone and MacBroom. I want to run through the architecture and really kind of some of the fun spaces, the amenity spaces, starting with the clubhouse here. So what makes continental properties, properties, properties really special are all of the passive and active use areas for all of the residents. So here you can see the clubhouse, and as we come out of the clubhouse, we have kind of this central corridor with cushioned seating, planters, and overhead string lights, two walkway areas that lead to the pool. And then on the left, we have a pergola that covers cushioned seating and lounge areas, cafe tables that lead over here into a synthetic turf area with outdoor beanbag chairs and an outdoor projection screen here for movies. Moving back along here, we have a large pergola structure that is above our outdoor kitchen, stainless steel barbecues, granite countertops, stone veneer on the cabinets. And then moving just to the right a little bit more, we have a fire pit, masonry fire pit with seating around it. Moving into our pool area, our pool is 25 feet, or 60 feet long, and anchored on both sides with a layering of chaise lounges, umbrellas, small tables. On the left here, we have our outdoor restroom, as well as the equipment storage area for all of the pool equipment. As we move just over, two small little faux bridge areas with, that move over kind of these faux lily pad gardens. There won't be water in them, but we'll have lilies in them. You can see a series of four cabanas, cushioned seating, chaise lounges in these four cabanas. And on both sides of these, we have these grove areas, so the entire area is tan stone dust with birch trees, and in there, we have hammocks, so you can grab your cup of coffee, grab a book, and really just lounge here. Moving further in the back here, we've got an open lawn area with groupings of Adirondack seating, cornhole games, you know, throw a frisbee around. And then just beyond that, we have another peat gravel area with additional hammocks, trees for shade, and outdoor ping pong. So you can see really just behind this entire area, there's a lot going on really for all ages, active and passive. It's kind of a precedent that we're looking to attain. It's really this formal New England modern farmhouse mixed with perennials and wispy grasses, but clean lines in all the other masonry and hardscapes. So rendering of the pool. In the background, you can see the clubhouse, and really in the center there, the big black framed windows. Those are actually garage doors that open up. And just to the right of that, in this area right here, this window opens up as well, and there's a bar inside. Inside here is the game room. Inside here is the great room. So really indoor/outdoor experiences from fire pit, outdoor kitchen, central chill area, and then cushioned area going into the pool, the restroom, and our cabanas in the back here. This is if you were walking out of the clubhouse in the back, looking towards the pool. You can see the pergola features on both sides, and this central gathering space, really a decision point on where you want to go and what you want to do. At the entrance, this is our sign monument, taking in kind of the elements from the architecture. Vinyl siding, AZAC trim, mansear roof, lot of planting, background of flower and trees. So this is our three-story building. The building has one elevator in it. It has two stairwells on each end. It's a 45-foot-tall building to the midpoint of the roof, and it's really made up to get rid of just this straight blank wall and really get some protrusions and shadows forming in the building. Starting with our three columnar areas here in white, this is vertical whiteboard mat siding. The majority of the building here, we can see the white windows. It's horizontal, vinyl... It's horizontal vinyl siding in a light gray. And then these indented nooks where the balconies are would be again horizontal vinyl siding in what we call a wicker. It's almost like a tan. And then picking up additional texture in the gables here with cedar impressions vinyl siding. Down on the pedestrian level here, we have three roof elements that would be standing seam metal roof. The majority of the roof is architectural asphalt shingles. Elevations of the clubhouse up top, looking at the back of the clubhouse, this grand glass that brings a lot of light into the great room, garage doors that open up. On the left, big windows for the fitness room. So there is that visual connection to the outdoors and indoors. And then our window over here that also opens up for interactions out into that pergola area. Standing seam metal roofs, fiber cement panel, board and batten in the main structure of the center of the building with our kind of farmhouse barn ends in a light gray horizontal vinyl siding and then breaking it up with some stone veneer in these two areas. And then going down, same materials, small windows, black metal windows, pergola as I mentioned, really trying to maintain that modern farmhouse aesthetic. These are side views of the clubhouse. On the bottom, again, those large windows, can imagine walking on a treadmill and looking out into the native perennials, really great environment. I think you guys had one thing. Do we want to go through the clubhouse interior?
No. Too much.
You guys, the clubhouse is good.
Thanks, Jason. As Jason mentioned, we have typically four plans for the buildings. We have the four plan for the clubhouse. You know, we could certainly kind of go through that in detail to the commission. We'd like to hear more about that. But you know, as we mentioned, we know we're not going to close tonight. We know we have to wait to get through the wetlands process. But we wanted to give a good overview of the project, answer any questions the commission may have, get some additional feedback. And obviously, we know we want to hear from the public tonight too. So I think with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Soling. Thought with the commissioners, thought on my right.
The clubhouse area and the pool and all that stuff we described, is that all fenced in?
Yes.
What type of fence?
Jason with SLR. It's a aluminum picket.
Thank you. That's it for me.
I just have one question on the height. Is that 45 feet to the peak of the roof or to what?
So it's 45 feet is based on the Town of Rose definition of height. So it's the mean elevation of the, it's not to the ridge, it's not to the top. It's roughly, it's the median height of the pitch roof.
So what do you have to the picture of the roof?
To the ridge line? It's a little bit taller, but it's, I'm not sure exactly, maybe 55, I think. But again, we have to follow what the Monroe definitions are for height. I think we go to our section, we might be able to see that a little bit better.
Don't you have that cross section?
So it's a little bit taller to the ridge. But again, I think this actually shows even where you have that cut in the back where actually even the peak of the ridge is lower than some of the existing grade back there. And with our additional screenings and landscaping, you know, we are expecting us to have visual impact surrounding.
I know you're in regulation with the town, but in your plans, what would it show? What would that height be?
I'm not sure the height to the ridge. I know we were designing to the height based on how the regulations are written, which is the 45 foot line.
Would I have that later on something?
Yeah, we can certainly provide that too.
Thank you.
The fireplace is gas, right? Damn. Stole my question. Next to an open garage. I'm not sure. Stole my question. Oh, that's it for now. Are you saying? Yeah.
That's what I said. You're saying you're going to have these garage doors open up? That you're going to be able to?
For the clubhouse?
For the clubhouse.
Well, we're going to have the ability to open them to create that indoor/outdoor space.
So you plan on having like bands there or any kind of music there or playing that kind of stuff?
No, it's not really an event thing. We wouldn't expect to have that. But you know, I think there're going to be some, you know, I think there are some rooms generally that can be kind of rented out for private parties. And if they have the ability to kind of create some more indoor/outdoor space, that's something that they want to provide.
There's no going to be like that kind of music.
You're awesome.
Stores like that.
All right. On the landscaping thing, so you showed us that one cutout, right? What about the rest of the properties that are around it? You're going to have enough screen where these neighbors won't be able to see the top of those buildings?
We could certainly provide some additional. I mean, we wanted to obviously focus on, you know, as Chris mentioned, the entire westerly property line is open space.
I know, it's all that.
To the north, we have a wetland system and then highly wooded. And then we added additional buffer plantings in response to some of the comments received at wetlands. To the south, we have that large cut, so we're kind of down in the hole. We have those plantings along the top of the hill. And then to the east, we have commercial property here and we do have, I guess, a couple of residential neighbors here. What we tried to do here is actually, we tried to separate and push the buildings as far away from those property lines as we could. So we could create that, decrease separation, that actually helped and it went from eight buildings to seven. And then we also have a series of evergreens here to create additional buffer. You know, I think, I think based on the separation and the screening, I wouldn't expect to have a very visual impact to those residents, to these buildings. We could certainly maybe provide some additional sections.
Yeah, I want to see those sections. And then, okay, you got the sidewalks. Can you put the sidewalk in a corner?
We did, yes. So we, as part of the discussions, we have sidewalks throughout focused on pedestrian connectivity there. And then a sidewalk down that main driveway of 25 and that sidewalk across the front block.
That's all I have.
Okay, we talked about 53 additional spaces that if you need them, you're going to put them in?
That's correct. So we have.
I didn't even ask you a question.
Oh, that's correct.
Where are we putting them? Where are their potential spots for them?
So we've shown, this is a deferred parking area here, which provides an additional 53, 53 spaces that can be built if there's a demand for it. Okay, so if that demand happens, you have.
An X amount of spaces already existing there, correct?
No, this is.
No, 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 right. Aren't those spaces where that line is?
This, no.
Here left?
Here, these are spaces.
Yes.
So how are you going to access them?
So this would connect directly into the drive here, just beyond the gates. So you'd be able to come in off the drive, turn right into this additional park.
Oh, so it's like an additional parking lot?
Exactly. It's a surplus parking area that can be constructed if there's a demand for it. So you can see here.
So we're not going to, you're not going to affect anything that's currently built?
That's correct. There'd be no impact to any existing operations, any existing parking. It would simply be a new access to help with this drive and it'll fill in or create a 53 spaces in through here. Now, those are above where the septic systems are located and all those septic systems are designed. So we have H20 loading and they'll be graded so that it can be, those can be constructed without impacting the future if so needed.
So that additional spot is, the septic is under, will be underneath it? When you come, so say you construct that, you have connection to the, to the other spaces that are there. So like when you come up the, when you come up the driveway, yeah, right there.
You would just kind of come into this drive here.
But there's no connection to that other spot right there, right?
No.
Either way, either coming up the driveway or?
No, it would just be an additional access right here to feed that.
Okay, I can see it there. That's better. Now, if you put those spots in there, are you, is there going to have to be some sort of screening that goes along? Or are you confident that you have enough? Because if you put in those 53 spaces right there, then you have an opening, it looks like up top there for screening.
So this is, this is a forested wetland that exists.
Right, and the other side is, and the other side is?
And then we actually added additional buffer plantings along this edge as part of, based on feedback that we heard at the wetlands hearing. So we added some additional screening plantings here. So we have, I mean, this is probably.
But that part's.
50 feet.
Isn't that lower than where the parking lot would be anyway?
It is. We're a little bit high. So I guess if, you know, we would be happy to maybe add some additional screening along this parking area if we were, if we ever needed to.
I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but I would, I would think like some sort of fence or some sort of screening along that side that goes to where the, where the down below, I mean, that's just my thought. Where are you going? Go the other way. One more, right there. It's like where the dark green meets the light green? Like maybe a fence of some sort there?
That's something you'd think we'd want to do if we built a parking?
If you built a parking, not now.
Yeah. I think that's a, that's a reasonable request. We could certainly add.
Can you do fencing over septic?
You can.
If you do a parking lot, why couldn't you do fencing? Parking lot's a little heavier than a fence.
I'm talking about, you know, how deep.
I hear you. I hear you. At one time, I believe Commissioner Ambrosi brought up an issue with, with something with the trucks coming in and out?
They got the truck turning, I think. You got enough, right?
You have enough space still, right? With the, getting a fire truck in there, getting an ambulance?
Yes.
I'm assuming there's going to be some sort of delivery.
Is that on your plan?
We do. We have, we have included our engineer report. We had truck turning figures which show emergency vehicles coming in throughout. You know, we also have, you know, an area designated for kind of parcel pickup. So that's coordinated and we have that worked into the site plan.
All right.
You can see actually here, we have kind of like a mail, mail here, mailroom here. So we actually have a designated kind of drop off area for that and then pickup for residents.
It was like mail trucks, isn't it? It's tiny.
Well, it can accommodate, you know, the Amazon trucks, things, obviously there's the prevalence of that is different.
I'm more concerned about fire and EMS and stuff like that.
Yep. No, we've been able to provide truck figures that demonstrates that there's more than enough room for accommodate that sort of.
Maybe because I don't know, but my thought process is if we have 196 units here, and I'm assuming the goal is to fully rent them.
I would assume so.
Okay, good answer. And, and most people are not going to be living alone. So you got about roughly, let's say 400 people living here. You're trying to tell me there's only 17? You're only going to add 17 cars to the traffic study? Stop clapping, please. Thank you.
So from a peak hour standpoint, right? So again, just to touch on the trip generation. Institute of Transportation Engineers establishes trip generation rates for similar type of uses based on local, regional and national studies. So when they look at a similar development like this, they figure out exactly how many cars come in and out. Now, traffic ebbs and flows throughout the day. What we have to look at is during that peak period where there's the most cars on the road, where we could have the most potential impact, we look at, for development like this, we look at the AM peak hour, which is a peak hour between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM. Then we look at the afternoon peak period, which is a peak hour between 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM. So that's, that's the baseline that we look at. So we do counsel on the corridor. We understand how all the intersections operate. And then we look at during those peak periods, how many trips are the estimated to come in and out of this development? Now, as, as you know, this commission knows, you know, just because they have 196 units doesn't mean 196 cars are going to leave during that peak period, whether it's in the morning or in the afternoon. So these rings are industry standard. They're accepted by the Department of Transportation. They're, they're prescribed to us to use when we're doing traffic studies. And this establishes that a development of this size would be estimated to generate 73 new trips in the morning and 77 new trips in the afternoon. You know, so that, and again, that's, that's those peak trips in one hour during those peak periods. So that's what, you know, as traffic engineers, those are kind of the tools in our toolbox that we have to use to determine what the potential impact.
So you're saying your study comes up with 73, but you have 17 people entering, right?
Correct. So there'd be 17 car.
So you're saying 56 cars are leaving. I'm more concerned about the cars leaving than entering personally myself. Just adding to 25, 25 is, you know. It's kind of narrow for being a major, major road in, in town, you know? 111 obviously is a little bit wider and I think that would probably be able to handle this a lot better, but that's not a, it's obviously not an option, right? So 50, so out of, hmm.
Now again, now we're talking about that peak hour period.
No, no, I, I get it, but I'm assuming that, that you said it's 55 and older.
No, this is not a 55 and older.
This is open to?
This is, yeah, this is all ages.
I mean, now that makes it even more concerning that, that, that I'm assuming those people have a job.
Certainly, but I'd say that.
I'm assuming they have to pay for this stuff. And I know that today's, today's workforce is more allowing you to work from home, but out of, let's say, if we're talking maximum numbers, out of 400 people, I don't see only 56 leaving for work in the morning. I would think that number would be. Higher, in my opinion.
Sure. And I certainly understand the concern. Now, I'm, I'll just say that, you know, we, we wouldn't expect to have 400 vehicles leave the site at the same time.
Well, I mean, let's, let's be honest, I don't think 400 people, it's like between 7:00 and 9:00. I don't think it's going to be a ghost town at nine o'clock in the morning.
No, of course not. But, but I think what.
But they also have employees, correct?
There'll be, yeah, there may be a few employees who, you know, maintenance and people.
All right, so they got five or six employees. So those five or six employees would be coming in. I don't know, I just, I think that number's low personally myself. That's just my opinion. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but.
From, from a, from a traffic operation standpoint, and again, you know, this, we have to make sure that we don't have an adverse impact. One of the things that we're proposing is to widen the exit drive so we can establish both a dedicated right turn lane and a left turn lane. And again, we have that other.
I think that's very important on 25.
It is. And we also have an additional means of begress to Purdy Hill.
All right, through the backside of, backside of Shell.
Goes behind the Shell station and the.
Dunkin' Donuts.
So that also provides the ability for, if you have to go north on 25, you have the ability to go out to a light and.
Take a left.
Person's trying to wait for a gap at the stop sign control behind Dunkin'.
Right, so, so those are some of my fears. My fears are that we sometimes will overflow that backside of the Shell and Dunkin' Donuts to get to that light, to make that left. And then it becomes a hazard on Purdy down there. And then, and then once we realize, oh my God, that's, that's a hazard, then we'll come down this way. And I just don't want to see cars trying to, like, like, like I see at Massacre High School at 7:15 every morning when I drop off my son, where we can't make that left, it's difficult, we're just trying to jump in front of someone. I just want to, I just want the safety for the town with that. It's my concern.
Understood. And that's part of something that we have to look at with our traffic impact study. And the DOT is also reviewing this as part of their process, the Office of Traffic Administration. So they're also looking at things like that. They look at all of the operations for all the signalized intersections, the stop sign controlled intersections. They're looking at the delay experienced for all those approaches. And if we have any impact to those, we have to mitigate those. Our study, based on the tools that we have, shows that, you know, these, the intersections through here maintain acceptable operating conditions and we aren't creating an adverse impact to traffic. And again, you know, with the DOT's additional review, hoping that can offer some comfort.
Our, our police and fire have had no issue with, I mean, I know they're not mostly, they're not into the whole traffic scene, but they've had no issue. You've, I'm assuming you've approached them on?
Yes, and actually, part of, part of the process with the DOT, the legal traffic authority in town, who is the police chief, also gets a copy of our traffic impact study, reviews that. reviews that, and actually has to provide concurrence with the DOT as they administer their decisions through the Office of State Traffic Administration.
And you haven't, and you haven't gotten that report back from DOT yet?
We haven't, no, we just started that process.
So once you get that report back from DOT, that should come back with a yay or nay from our police commissioner as well?
That's correct, it will.
Okay.
Police chief.
Chief, my bad.
The.
Police chief.
And again.
Make sure we get the chief on this.
And again, from a traffic standpoint, the previously approved plan here had, you know, in the afternoon peak hour, for example, I'm pretty sure they had upwards of six hundred trips that would be generated from this development, from this property as part of that project. We're a fraction, a fraction, so from a, from a traffic impact standpoint, this is probably one of the best uses for a property, because it's a far less traffic.
I'm, I'm, I'm not against that this is the best use of this property, I'm just, my.
At the end of the day, I'm concerned about safety, that's really, really where it comes.
It comes from, and if at the end of the day, Chris, that's not nice, Chris. And now like if, if, I mean, if it comes back with, that's your study, and the police chief comes back and says, okay, and DOT says it's okay, then what am I going to do?
You know what, Mike?
Any other questions?
I'm good.
All right.
I mean, the traffic impact study is suspect, as many that come in front of us are. I do think that the secondary road is going to prove very helpful getting in and out of this project. Now, talking about the septic systems, is everything gravity fed on this, or do you have some pumps, some engineered systems involved?
Everything's gravity fed.
And as far as systems of this magnitude, we see on other projects in town, if they're not properly maintained, they can fail quickly. What does the maintenance schedule look like on, on this project as far as pumping the tanks and servicing the systems?
Well, the beauty of this project from a septic maintenance standpoint that maybe differentiates this from a lot of other larger scale developments in town is that this is owned and operated by Continental Properties. So they are the overarching responsible party for all of the systems, for all of the buildings. So, you know, there are some other large developments, North Bridge, or, you know, there's some other larger developments in town that may have larger septic systems.
Northbrook.
Northbrook, excuse me, but if they're, if, if those are kind of maintained by a series of individuals, sometimes those can fall into disrepair because there's not a unified body or unified funding to, to do whatever maintenance is needed. That problem can be avoided here because there's an overarching responsible entity to ensure that those things don't happen, you know, because, because as a, as a, as an apartment development, you know, no one's going to, if, if there's an issue, septic, people are going to want that address right away, they're not going to want to live or reside where there's issues, so there's, there's an additional, you know, I think that's a very good concern, but the fact that there's, there's kind of a, a single entity who's, who's intended, you know, that they own and operate these things, there's another responsible party. Now, to do that in too, this system is being reviewed with the Department of Public Health, Matt Pollock, we've had several, the property has been tested again and again and again, the, the, the previous owner, gentleman named Jake Keeler, some of the commissioners probably know him, his nickname was Septic Jay, he helped write the codes, so he was very much in tune with that, and we were able to, to do a number of testings with him before he passed away. Now his wife, Sabrina owns the property and is, is selling it to Continental. The, so there's been exhaustive testing out here with Matt Pollock, there's additional review with Matt Pollock and the former public health and the local sanitarians, so there's, we happen to be in a very, for a few, situation where there's tremendous septic sand on this property that naturally exists. So from a, from a location standpoint, this really is the, the optimal location from a traffic standpoint, from a septic capacity standpoint, that it can be accommodated here without any concern.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely don't question the design of the system, just, just making sure that it's maintained. You got wetlands near the property, and it could be disastrous if that's not maintained and it's overflowing, and now, when we're coming up here, the additional plantings that are, were added onto the right side of the driveway here in the northern section, what, what species are going there and what is going to be the height when they're installed and planted?
Um, so Mary Blackburn, Arlen's Department of Transit, the Soul Engineering, couldn't be here this evening, so I don't have that information, do you have the plan? Hang on a second. I'm, yeah. What? I just want to get in. But we have a combination of a number of compliance, but we have some decorations, we have some, there's like the Latin name. We have some red maples, we have some dogwoods, you know, for some of the wetland shrubs, we have.
Dogwoods and sweet shit.
Summer sweet, dogwood, witch hazels, sweet spiders, we wanted to pick stuff because those are in the regulated area, they're all native, but they're also going to be lights and bupery.
But the.
You know, we have some birch trees, fir trees, cedars, arborvitae's throughout the area, so we, we tried to pick some that'll, that'll be more robust and provide some.
I'm, I'm more interested in the screening aspect of it than the aesthetics, you know, I don't think that the dogwoods are going to do much in the way of screenage.
Yeah, those are actually not, those actually aren't in that specific core.
I, I mean, when we go to approve this, just if you can, you know, get some clarity on that, and also the growth rate of the different species, so what they're planted at and what class they're going to grow, and that's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
One more question.
Yeah.
On that other access road, did you guys use it behind Dunkin' Donuts? You have some kind of agreement with them or deal with that?
So Sabrina Keeler, who owns the orange twenty-acre parcel that we're talking of tonight, also owns those parcels, so there are access easements, you know, established to.
So she's going to give you an access easement on that?
Correct.
Going to be.
There's, there's access agreements and then there's maintenance agreements between the parcels as well.
Right, so that's going to be on a, on the plan, on the map?
Sure.
By that town?
Yes.
If she sells a Dunkin' Donuts for that piece of property, that easement is going to go away.
Actually, the, well, so the, no, there's, there's.
I mean, if it's not there, do you already have one there or no?
So the Dunkin' Donuts has actually been conceived, but she still owns the gas station, and we're working on a declaration now and easement mapping, which the Dunkin' Donuts owner has agreed to comply with because obviously it gives them rights as well.
Right.
So those rights are being established and will be effective and in place through appropriate deeds and, and record.
So that'll be on the land records.
Correct.
Well, I just wanted to make sure because if they sold the property and somebody says you can't use that road anymore.
No, it's, it's.
It would be a different.
It, it's critically important for, for Continental to ensure that their rights are protected and then obviously maintenance obligations, cost sharing for that, et cetera.
That it, okay, Dominic, go ahead.
Just for clarification, you might have went over already, the clubhouse and that facility, is that just for the tenants?
It is, yes, it's for residents.
Does each tenant have to pay a fee or that's?
It's included in there, right?
No other people from the outside?
No, only guests of the residents.
Okay. On the cars, each unit gets allocated one space?
So, correct, consistent with the mark, we wanted to kind of talk about the structure because there were some questions by Commissioner Condon. So generally speaking, each space gets assigned one unit, or each unit gets assigned one space. They have the ability to rent a second space if they so choose. At the mark, roughly twenty-five percent of the spaces are designated visitor spaces, that would be consistent here. One of the biggest things is we actually have more parking spaces per unit at this facility than exists at the mark, there are approximately one point eight spaces per unit there for their total count, we're at two spaces per unit here, and we have those additional fifty-three spaces identified if we need to build them.
Okay, so you could provide all those spaces if they require?
Correct, exactly. We were already providing more parking per unit at this facility than the mark provides, and we have an additional fifty-three to add in the future if there's a demand for it.
Okay, and that's all I have, thank you.
Great.
Okay, any other questions from the commissioners? All right, next we'll go to public comment. Let me tell you how that's going to work. Do any people here in the audience or online that want to comment on this application? I will have you raise your hand, I will then call on you, you'll then come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. As you've noticed, we have one speaker at a time. The engineers spoke at a time, I'm not going, I'm going to expect any members of the public to speak one at a time. There'll be no clapping or applause. When you come up, you will address me and the commissioners, you will not address the engineers. You will give your comments, if you do have any questions, the questions will be towards me or the other commissioners, and we'll try to get answers for them if we can. If these rules are not complied with, then we will end the public session. So if there anybody, if there's anybody here today that would like to make comments, please raise your hand. All right, we'll start with those here and then we'll go to those online. Over here, I want you to come up to the microphone and you name an address for the record, please.
My name is Barbara Lee, twenty-sixth Avenue, Drive in Monroe.
Okay, go ahead.
Don't want to step overstep here. I didn't have comments so much other than that this looks like enormously heat generating entity. It's nothing but pavement, and when, it's going to be, the sun is going to be beating down on it, there's got no shade from any place, and it's just going to radiate heat to the entire surrounding area, which is going to affect the ecology of the wetlands and as well as the state of being of the people that live nearby because that heat radiates all over the place. So that was just a comment, though, and a serious concern. The other one was more of a question, in this area, era of green energy, I didn't see anything in this building plan that would utilize that concept. You're on top of a hill, they could have solar panels to help mitigate the cost of electricity and reduce the impact on the grid. I didn't see anything of that nature, and I wondered if anyone could perhaps, I'm not asking for an answer, obviously, but I just thought maybe someone would like to dig deeper into that one. I'm very concerned about those huge glass panels on the windows. Bird light slams into glass, it only sees a reflection of the sky, and I think that being up on a hill where there's nothing to really mitigate the height of those windows, I think we could see some serious issues as far as the bird light is concerned. So those were my, oh, and then one, only one other thing, two other things, are the retaining pools, mosquito breeding, enough said. Septic drainage, as everybody usually pointed out, this is a gravity-based situation, there are wetlands down below, I'm thinking that the Northbrook has septic fields, that's the only thing everybody gets around here, but at least ours are on a level and we can deal with it. This stuff is going to be draining downwards, and water and that kind of seepage has a way of finding its way through every crevice there is known to man to get down to a level that's on a, a lower plane. I'd be seriously concerned about that. So those were only my, just hearing this thing in here, thank you for hearing me out.
Well, thank you very much. Any other members here today? Yes, in the back, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Rick Smith, the resident or owner of the house for over a decade here. I'm also on the Economic Development Commission, I've served the town. My concern is, and I know it's going to be a difficult one, but it's not just the traffic flow here, Bruno, I appreciate what you said, not just this, and I have serious doubts, or I'd like to, I'd like to get into the, more of the specifics on it, but my concern is not just this development, but the development that's going to be a half mile down the road, the mixed development right at the Trumbull Line. When you combine the two of them, and you add a couple of school buses, I got to tell you, Bruno, I'm sweating, and I think we should take a really good look at it, and I'd be willing to help out, I'm an engineer, like I said, I'm with the EDC, and I'm concerned with smart growth, not just growth in town, but smart growth. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Over here, Lou.
I'll do that one time.
My name is Maureen Wicklund, and I live at fifty-three Crescent Place in Monroe, I border the side of Proctor Bay, it's one-twenty-seven. My question is, I'm concerned about the traffic, like was brought up, also, on the side that I border, are they going to be putting a fence along with the Evergreen?
I believe so, yes.
I believe so, okay, and is it going to go all the way, extend all the way to the end of my property?
I think there's a whole perimeter fence.
A whole perimeter, okay, because it didn't show the whole perimeter on the thing over there.
That's a classification.
Which side are you on in?
Looking at that, on that, the left side, okay, I border the whole area going down.
That's where they bordered.
Okay.
That's where they bordered that whole corner.
The traffic really, really upsets me because the average family in Monroe owns two to three cars, maybe they're going to only hire to, or rent these places up to people with small children, but you're still talking two cars because you got, how many families can make it on one income? You know, Main Street's, it's a nightmare, but while they're between seven and nine, forget it, and then in the evening, it's, you know, and it's frustrating. And how, why would these, these trees and these fence, how high would they go up? That, you know, I'm, I'm going to see the top of these buildings. That and the lights, what kind of lights are they going to put over there? Is the whole lot here going to be lit up?
The lights are dark sky compliant, so the lights shoot down on the, it's not like, it's not like, it's not like we're going to be at Yankee Stadium and it's going to light up the whole way.
On the lights. My head, my down.
The code asks for dark sky compliance, so the lights shoot down.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public here tonight that would like to comment?
Yes, in the back, come on up.
Hello, my name is Miri Orsillo, I live at one-thirty-six Stanley Road here in Monroe, and I'm also a member of Saber Statine. I just had a couple of concerns, and perhaps I didn't hear everything, my hearing is a little bit wanting, but I would be interested to see, or maybe it's already happened, that the DOT, the state, what their traffic study was or is, the results, and I think that needs to be looked at carefully. The traffic on twenty-five now, I lived here all my life, I know it's going to get worse with progress, but the entering and exiting of this proposed residential facility is going to be very, it's just going to impede what already is a nightmare and a safety nightmare. And I'm very concerned about the planning and the upcoming projects that we've all seen that are coming down the road, that will, I know we can only discuss the projects that we're working on here tonight, but I don't think we can forget the upcoming future projects that we know are going to be discussed, they're going to add to that A roadway. And lastly, I just want all of us to think long and hard what we want the future of Monroe to be and what, what we want it to look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Orsillo. Anyone else here tonight that would like to comment on this application? Anyone else here tonight that would like to comment on this application? If not, we'll go to anyone online that would like to comment. I see there's two people, Anthony Croce.
Yes, that's correct.
Go ahead, name your address, please.
Sure, Anthony Crose, I'm at 34 Little Fox Lane. So mine and my wife's concern is, looking at the imagery and the landscaping plan, it looks like the imagery that is being used there is approximately three or four years old. So all of the trees that are in the picture on our property haven't been there in three or four years. So I'm just, we have a little bit of a concern over the lack of screening foliage in the landscaping plan there. It looks like the rest of the property has, you know, thick green vegetation. And if I recall, it looked like there was two or three trees approximately to be planted in that area. And, you know, trust me, I could see literally everything that goes on there, including the 25-foot dirt pile that's there now, as well as all of the activity that happens on a daily basis, including on Sundays, that my wife has had to call about numerous times to complain about. So this concern about if there's any, going to be any screening foliage planted there so that we don't have to have direct visibility on the buildings.
Which side are you on?
I don't know the cardinal directions. If you look at the landscaping picture, my house is in the northwest corner, the one with the pool.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have 233 iPad.
Yes, hello. It's, I'm not an iPad, I'm Karen Bernaska. I live at 99 Bagburn Road. And I'd like to just reiterate the memo that was sent to the Planning and Zoning Commission from the Conservation Commission requesting that at least 80% of the plantings used in this application and that being, that being used on the, in this development, be native plants. I heard a representative from Solly say that from, in the Upland Review Area, Wetlands has requested, and they will put in all native plants. And the Conservation Commission is requesting that at least 80% of the rest of the plantings in the project be native. And on a personal note, I would just like to concur with everyone who has spoken this evening and voiced their concerns about traffic issues with not only this project, but the project even lower down on Main Street. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bernaska. And I believe we have Al Lisha, Lisha.
Hi. Hello, Commissioner. This is Alicia Garfield, and I'm on 58 Laurel Drive, which is, if you're looking at the map, I'd say it was probably northwest, about 750 feet from the property. I just wanted to also point out that the traffic flow data that was shown represents the, I guess, best case scenario with 196 cars total. As others said, that likely there would be twice that. So making sure when the DOT report comes back that it addresses both the best case and worst case scenarios. Also, to echo the others, traffic is a concern, but not only that. If you were to estimate four people per household times 196, that's approximately 775 people. And so, you know, the septic, I'm not, that's just an assumption. If, I'm just saying, if you were to estimate 196 times four, that's approximately 774 people, okay? So that's a lot of sewage, and if it's, I don't, you know, so just bear that in mind. But not only that, if you were to say out of that.
One and two bedrooms, right?
Yeah, oh, so like, my kids have, I have two boys in one bedroom. So if we were to say, okay, well, maybe a portion of that, or, you know, half of that, half of 775 is maybe close to, you know, 380, had two kids, that's 380 students that need to go to Monroe schools. And we don't have that space at the moment. So like, what are we going to do as a town to accommodate those students? Not only that, but also special needs students, which today we have a shortage of staff for. So those are the types of things that I'm thinking about as a member of the community. And I hope that you can also consider those things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Garfield. Do we have anyone else online that would like to comment on this application? Please raise your hand. Okay, anyone else here in person that would like to comment on this application? Application will be kept open. There will be another hearing. You'll get another chance if you think of something at that point. And we'll go back to the applicant if you'd like to respond to any of these comments. I know there was some low-impact development.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chairman O'Reilly. So we appreciate the public's comment this evening, and actually, you know, I took a lot of good notes because I wanted to make sure that, you know, I know some of the surrounding waters made some comments and questions about screening and plantings and things like that. So that actually allows us to kind of take those comments, and I think we can maybe provide more formal responses at the next meeting. And if we need to even look at maybe adding some additional buffer plantings and screenings and fencing, we'll do that, cover that, you know, in advance, provide that in advance of the next meeting so we can talk about it in the next hearing. You know, I know there were concerns about, or some general commentaries about traffic. Again, and I know, I know it seems, maybe it seems counterintuitive, 196 apartments, there's going to be way more traffic. You know, these, these rates are based on, you know, specific studies of similar projects, and then they're reviewed and approved by DOT. We're pretty confident in the numbers that we're, that we're quoting here. So we don't really see the potential impact. And I know there's concerns, obviously, there's other developments happening in town. You know, as a resident, I think those are good because they, you know, commercial investment, economic investment in the community is good. It helps burden the taxes on the residential side, and it puts more of that onus on the, on the commercial side, which really this kind of falls into. I, I think that's a good thing. But, but with all of those projects and the potential traffic concerns with them, every project, especially the ones that we're talking about on this corridor, they're all of the size where they're going to have to go through that same level of review, not only with this commission, but also with the DOT. And every one of those projects is going to have to mitigate their impact. So, you know, I know there's concerns, and there's some commentaries about the narrowness of 25. The signalized intersection of Purdy Hill actually has turn lanes in all directions. So it's not just a single lane at a stop sign or at a signal where, you know, one car can't go through because they're waiting a turn left. We actually have left turn lanes at all those intersections. Additionally, I think there's another project on the agenda this evening across the street from this. They're actually proposing some widening on Route 25 to provide some additional weather traveling southbound, which will help alleviate that. And then the other projects further south along, kind of right along the town line of Trumbull, they're all, you know, as those projects are developed and come before the commission, they're also going to have to provide traffic studies. They're going to have to go to the DOT and be reviewed as well. The DOT is, is, is very focused and concerned in making sure the projects mitigate their impacts. You know, there were some commentaries about kind of like the Heat Island effect. I'll say that we, I think that we've been able to design a site with a lot of shade trees. We don't have a huge swath of pavement where you have multiple rows of parking lots, kind of like in front of like Stop and Shop, right? We actually were able to design the site so that we have, you know, kind of a double row of parking, but we have buildings on both sides, and we have landscaped islands spread throughout. And all those shade trees, it actually does reduce that heat, heat island effect that was kind of raised from a concern standpoint.
Can you pull that back up?
I, yeah, I can't share the screen. Hopefully, Rick can. Yeah, so you can see, so we were able to kind of create a lot of shade islands throughout and landscaped islands, you know. So we do, we have kind of, this is a 60-foot wide swath of pavement with parking, parking on both sides of the drive aisles. And then we have, we're able to provide landscaping right beyond that. You know, obviously, we're focused on pedestrian connectivity, so we have sidewalks throughout. But we were able to create some, some shade spots. The, you know, I'll, I'll provide some more feedback on the percentage natives. I don't have that at my fingertips.
Mary Blackburn will be available.
Yes, yeah, she'll be, she'll be here at the next meeting. And she'll also be at the next Y. L. N. hearing, if anyone cares to go to that. You know, and I know kind of anecdotal things, and maybe we didn't talk about it before, but the, the product itself, this is, this is a development that's, that's limited to just one bedroom and two bedroom units. So we don't have any three bedroom units. Approximately 60% two bedrooms, which is allowed and permitted under the SD, the Special Development District. And the impact on school systems, we provided a comprehensive fiscal assessment and, and potential impacts from the schools' kids. I know there were some anecdotal, what if there's 300 kids at this? There certainly won't be. I think we're estimating approximately 18 or 17 school-aged children. And a lot of the times, developments like this, it's not necessarily new kids to the school system. Oftentimes, you'll find people that are, we like to call them suddenly single, where they want to stay in town, they want to stay in a school district. So they're moving from a different part of town into here, whether it's for a year or a longer duration. But, you know, we wouldn't, we're not expecting a huge impact on the schools. We're not expecting a lot of schoolchildren. You know, from a septic generation standpoint, with only one bedrooms and two bedrooms, we have specific rates we have to utilize from, from the Health Department, from the Public Health Code. And again, our, that system goes through a complex review. So we're very confident that we're going to be able to, you know, construct the facility without any kind of adverse impacts. But we definitely appreciate all the comments. We took really good notes, so we'll probably come back before the commission and just slide some additional information for the next hearing. And, and, you know, we look forward to continuing the discussion in the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sello. So we will continue this, so next meeting.
Thank you.
Moving along, our second of four public hearings tonight is SCP 2023-02, file number 16508, 126 Main Street. Across the street. This one, I believe, is continued from 21620. Thank you for your patience. Do we have any new exhibits, Rick?
Everybody sitting? It's always going to get beat up in the parking lot.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Exhibit Number Six, DOT Comments. Exhibit Number Seven, Revised Plans, that is all.
Okay, the applicant?
Chairman, my name is Bill Fitzpatrick. Attorney at Fairfield with the law firm of Russo and Rizzo. Have offices at 10 Sasko Hill Road. I'm here tonight representing Hock LLC. The applicant for special exception permit, permitting the proposed renovation of the existing building on site for a new gas station. Convenience store. Principal, the applicant to Sharaz Qadari. I have worked with Mr. Qadari on several other service station applications, including two in Fairfield, one in Bridgeport, and another in Old Saybrook. My point is that Mr. Qadari is an experienced operator of this kind of facility. This matter was continued from the February 16, 2023 commission meeting in order to give the applicant the opportunity to address several points. First item was the submission of a plan revision to satisfy the Department of Transportation requirements that set forth in their letter to the applicant to February 15, 2023. Plan revisions have been made, have been submitted to both the town, the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation and to the commission. In an unusually quick turnaround, Connecticut Department of Transportation has replied, has reviewed the plan revisions. And by letter dated February 27, 2023, has confirmed that the plans have been reviewed, and DOT has no further comments. A copy of that letter has been submitted to the commission. Second item was the submission of a plan highlighting the travel path of the tanker truck servicing premises. This revised plan has been submitted. The commission confirms the tanker truck can access and exit the site safely. Mr. Santa Croce will speak to the commission on that issue as well as the DOT letter. Third item was the submission of a signage plan. Signage proposal has been added to the detail sheet. It's been submitted to the commission. This includes a wall sign for the convenience store and a price sign. Another item was the submission of an up-to-date letter from Fuel Company, which will service the premises. An updated letter dated February 7, 2023, has been submitted to the commission. Letter from Mystic Oil Company, Inc., states in relevant part, and I quote, "Our client, Hock LLC, is proposing a new gas station on Main Street. We can manage their fuel inventory. We'll be able to schedule deliveries between the hours of midnight and 4:00 a.m. Have reviewed the site plan, made sweep paths, and are confident that the tankers we use will be able to easily enter and exit premises." Then, the applicant will stipulate, up to a condition of approval, that gas station deliveries be made on site only when the station's closed. This condition will be recorded on the rental land records as part of the approval. It's a warrant of the land, and we'll be finding out all subsequent owners of the property. I'd like to briefly review the relevant special exception considerations set forth in zoning regulations. First, the proposed use is in harmony with the development of the district in which it is located, the president, the presence. Other gasoline stations on Route 25 are indicative of this fact. In addition, the plan is consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development. The Plan of Conservation and Development recommends encouraging reinvestment in transformational and making tenant spaces such as this. The proposal here will upgrade this site and add to the town tax rolls. Location, nature, and height of the building and the nature of the site development are such that the use will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and properties. The proposed gasoline station is consistent with development in the immediate area. There's no reason to believe the operations of the proposed use will be objectionable by reason of noise, fumes, or flashing of lights. The applicant is installing a new sanitary septic system, which has been reviewed and approved by the appropriate authorities. The parking areas will be of adequate capacity for proposed use. Entrance and exit drives have been made one way in and one way out. Achieve maximum safety. Submitted revised plans to the committee of DOT, addressed its concerns. And as I noted earlier, received additional letter from the state DOT, suggesting no changes are necessary. Proposed use will not require additional public facilities or services or create fiscal burdens on the town. On the contrary, the site will be elevated and upgraded. An increase in assessed value is likely. Your zoning regulations group contains supplemental regulations applicable to automotive uses. The majority of those regulations apply to repair shops and body shops. It's not mandatory repairs on site, or any body repair work on site. There will be any sale or rental motor vehicles. Any relevant portions of the supplemental regulations will be complied with. If special exception factors have been identified, satisfied, the applicant believes this application is ready for the commission's approval. I'd like to introduce Steve Santa Croce of Rose T. Zone to highlight the documentation. That will be the last here.
Thank you. My name is Steve Santa Croce. Actually, I'm a state of Connecticut. I work at Rose T. Zone Company, located on 35 Franklin Avenue. I'm here in the neighborhood. And I just wanted to, again, highlight some of the points that Tony Fitzpatrick made. We submitted the plans to DOT. They reviewed the plans, and they approved a revision of the customer's cake. It's only a one day of the sweep. And they were looking at trucks turning from Route 25 into the site, circulating throughout the site and exiting the site. And they had to review that for safety and traffic concerns. And, and, and there's a comment about that concern. So to just identify the project, it's located across the street from the project you just said. It's right next to Dunkin' Donuts, or across the street from that. The property certainly has a tractability building that we're in. The general property will be a lot better than current location in the state today. And so we have a site plan showing the existing building that's going to be refurbished here. With gas pumps in the front and this building will be turned into a convenience store. We prepared a very extensive water management plan, integrating a plan that has been reviewed by the engineer, the town engineer. And this plan also went through the wetlands commission and was approved, as well as the health department. This is our soil erosion plan. Also, we have an engineer providing the septic systems. Now, we're going to have a catchphrase in this little section there. Then anti-tracking pads during construction. We have our typical detail sheets for the soil or rain erosion control. We also provide a landscape plan for the site. Lighting plan showing that there's going to be zero lighting in the wetlands, which is to the rear of the site. Zero light levels rather. And we have some lighting shown already that I've proposed gas camping in the building. Here we have section details for the store water management plan. And we come to our detail sheet that was submitted recently, as requested by the commission. The details for the sign that will be on the site showing the gasoline prices. And I don't know if you're, you know, if you're on twenty-five, looking at all the other gas stations that are similar to what's out there in terms of size. So they're kind of modeling it from those other over. And then we're also showing what's going to be on the building. So in compliance with the zoning regulations in terms of the site. We have a detailed sheet with store water details. There are fourteen plans that, again, have been approved. And this is just showing a slight widening of the road across the street. And this plan is very minimal in terms of the widening. It allows cars that are traveling in this direction to the right side. Any cars that will turn into the site. And that's the reason for that widening. I would say most of the traffic, you would think, turning into the site or northbound. Pointed out last, there's several other gas stations on the, right, on the other side of the road, so. You'd think that, you know, common sense would tell you northbound traffic is going to turn into this gas station, southbound is going to turn into the other side of the road. Last week, the commission also requested some bolder lines drawn on the plan. Here we have figure one that was submitted. This is a fuel truck entering the gas station from the hours of midnight until four morning, as specified by the letter from Mystic Oil. Circulating across the again, this was something you have to approve. Figure two, truck turning, showing delivery vehicles entering the site from northbound and southbound, circulating throughout the site. And they're able to exit the site safely. If there's any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Have you answered?
Your update, it sounds like you addressed all commissioners' concerns. But sure, let's go once again. Start tonight on my left.
Can we talk about the renovation of the building a little bit? What will the improvements to the exterior look like? And do you have a rendering?
Sir, this was also aligned through ARB and it was approved by ARB. But you have a front elevation, so this is the biggest thing from the building. We have our storefront windows. And again, this is existing building, so we're not, we're not adding stories on adding any. Just making it look better. This is, so the rear elevation is a level below. And we can see that from the side of the trucks. And there's some garage doors to the rear. He's gonna, we're proposing a storage area underneath the first floor elevation, so.
Private storage.
Okay.
And that's the last time for Bollards?
Bollards?
Are they on the plan here?
They're not currently shown on the plan, but we can always add them as a condition.
Certainly on the faces facing.
Correct. Yep.
Now, the other concern or question I have, I'm going to direct towards staff. Rick, we haven't finished updating the regulations on the EV charging station.
That's correct.
And we have some on this plan. How will that affect the potential approval of this project?
The State of Connecticut is mandating it, so that's something that we're fulfilling. Our regulations are for, to put standards in. So the question that you need to present to the applicant, are you, are you satisfied that the location will not interfere with the orderly circulation of the customers and deliveries?
And that's a Connecticut state standard at this point that we're adopting.
It's in effect right now.
Not in the process of adopting into our own regulations. To work in all the state for now.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, so we'll just have to look at that and make sure that we're comfortable with the.
Yeah.
I have no problem with it. I just want to know how it was going to interface with our regulation. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. My name is.
Good job. Can you, can you pull up the building again, please?
Sure.
So you show us the sign that you're going to put up, but where's it going?
I think it could go, you know, probably right at center here of the of this area.
And that sign you, you're proposing is, you're going to make it go there or is that what we're thinking? Okay.
Yeah. Sorry, I don't have an update or anything with the sign in place, but we wanted to show the detail of the sign. It just says it's in compliance with the regulations.
And then the sign in the front, where are you putting that? That's going to show the prices and all that kind of stuff?
So that's going to be shown, if you can see this.
So that's kind of like where Duchess is? Like on that?
Yeah, Duchess is up higher, so there's, there's a wall in this area, so.
Right, right, right. That's the island in the middle. And then that sign is going to be closer to the Duchess property line, right?
It's located up near the exit.
Yeah, I, I still. Oh, I was going to say so. I still, I still have still have concerns about the trucks and stuff going in there and with your traffic guy last time talking about using that side road to make turns and stuff. So I'm, I'm still a little concerned about that. I guess in my head, I, I don't see it, but, you know.
Okay, I mean, you know, like I said, if you think about it.
I've thought about it.
Yeah.
I've thought about it.
So northbound traffic is what they're going to do is they're going to turn into the site, get, get some gas.
I hear what you're proposing. And I hear what they're saying they're going to do. And that, that whole comment you said about common sense, unfortunately, I struggle with it. I, I don't have any more questions.
Okay. Commissioner Ambrose?
Where are, where are you going to put the, the tanks? Where are they going?
Gas tanks are located.
Do you have them on this map anywhere?
Yep. Underground storage tanks are located right in this location.
That's the four fuel stations.
So how, how are you planning on getting that truck in there?
So there's a designated loading space and also there's going to be no one in the parking lot when the tanks pull up on the. There's going to be no one else in the parking lot when the trucks.
I understand. We went over that before. But the problem I have with it is that, like I said, it goes, goes with the property. I know what you're saying. They're only going to deliver a certain time at night. You're going to put it on the land records. It doesn't mean that when you sell the property or if somebody else fix a twenty-four hour gas station or something like that, that we have to go after them to make them in compliance.
So.
I have, I just have an issue with the way you have it set up with these pumps, where this truck has to come in there and back up in order to get onto, onto the fuel, those, those tanks. Because you don't have enough room.
I, I, I would disagree and I also think that this is not a typical gas station layout.
And so you said that you brought this, this plan to DOT.
Correct.
That they had no problem with the circulation of trucks going through the property. I don't believe DOT has anything to do with the side of your property. They only have to deal with the road.
They, they review that the trucks can safely enter and exit the site.
Right, but nothing to do with turning radius in there like you said that the DOT.
Yeah, the DOT doesn't review, but the town engineer does it. Yeah, no comments.
And our town engineer had no comments about the truck path here.
And he is on tonight, Mr. Chairman.
He's on tonight? Can we get him on?
Who do you have on tonight? Joe.
Good, good evening.
Good evening.
Did you hear the question that Commissioner Ambrose had?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. I missed part of that.
All right, go ahead. Tell me, ask him again.
Well, I have a concern about a truck coming into that property, especially a fuel truck, coming into that property to service the tanks. Where he has to go through aisle six and he has to come out to aisle one. Now, they're saying that, you know, they're going to only do it late at night. And that they're going to put it on the land records and everything, but what happens if that doesn't happen? They're going to end up going through the path of that, right? And there's no safety? Is, would there be a safety concern over that happening if they came at a different time? I mean, we would have to police that as far as town would have to. And as we know, that, that doesn't happen all the time. But I'm concerned about the path that it directly goes in six and then it directly has to come out on one.
Yeah, could the applicant please put the, that truck turning sample back up on the screen, please?
Sure.
Right. Right, yeah, so I, I, I think that's a well-founded concern if, you know, during the business, it's, ultimately it's a management issue. Unfortunately, don't know enough about operations of gas, gasoline stations to know if they have the ability to control when deliveries are made or, you know, or the extent of the control that they have over that. There's probably a lot of different variables at play, but in this instance, if a vehicle is at number six, it would be an issue. That, and, and the vehicle were, you know, for a few pull in, you know, just by looking at the wheel track. But that said, I understand that DOT has signed off on it. And, you know, the their, their concern is the operation of the state highway as well. But, yeah, just looking at this, at the surface, I, I think that's a valid concern. Commissioner?
I, I don't believe that DOT has any, any control over what we approve on site as far as turning radius. I think they're only worried about what comes, what goes off the road on the highway and what comes back on to the highway. I believe it's up to us making a concern that if we're going to have a problem. I don't think DOT looks at the interior plans of the property. Am I right about that?
Right, yeah, their, their concern is clearly of the state right away. They will, they, sometimes they will take a look at it if it's an immediate impediment. For example, if there were a quick turn as, you know, as you enter the site, you know, say to the left and the right. You know, or if there were a stop or something like that in close proximity to the right of the line. But, yeah, I, I don't think we would get that deep into the site with a review. The internal circulation within the site would be the jurisdiction of the town.
So can I just, again, sorry to interrupt, me? The point again that there are going to be no cars on site when the fuel truck enters the site because they're delivering from twelve AM to four in the morning.
Yeah, I, I have, I, I understand what you're saying. I got all that, okay? And you have, you have an agreement with the company that you're going to come at that certain time. I have all that. And you want to put that on the land records that that's going to happen at this certain time. And if for some reason the property gets sold again, or you don't lease it anymore, or, or if the company that you, you hire that delivers the fuel, you have to get another company and they're not in agreement with that and they come earlier or they come during a time or anything like that, that's something then now it's up to the town to please. And I don't want the town to have to police a piece of property that I already see that there's a problem when you go in six and you come out one. And the reason why I know all about this is because I used to own a fuel station. And so I know when the trucks come. I understand when they come in, how they come in. And, and most stations don't want them anywhere near going through the traffic of anywhere on the highway. Because, and even with you, you get to fill the, the tank, you're going to have to back that truck up because you have to make a wide turn, come in, go like that and then back the truck up in order to fill those tanks. And, and I know by just looking at, at the diagram that that's what's going to happen. So my, I have very, 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 I mean, I don't know what the rest of the commissioners, but I have concerns about the turning radius within the place with a fuel truck.
Okay, do you have any thoughts right now? Commissioner Kanda?
Any chance you could lose a pump?
Come on.
No, that's, that's, this is part of the reason why we went kind of above and beyond and got the the letter and like Joe was saying, it's, it's a management issue and we have the manager of the gasoline store with us tonight. And, you know, if that's a huge concern to the commission, I'm sure he's going to take that into consideration. We already have, you know, discussed this issue quite a bit and we we've thought about it and we've got the same appropriate letter from the suppliers. They, you know, they're looking at it too. They didn't seem as concerned as.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Kanda? So from your point of view, design wise, what's the best location that you could put that tank?
Um, yeah, I, I would, I would say so. It's, it's located near the entrance. The fuel truck can come in. And, and it has this aisle width here is thirty-two feet. It's only required to be twenty-four feet, so we're going above and. It's only required to be 24 feet, so we're going above and beyond that. Normal aisle width for a gas station. And additionally, he has all this pavement to work with. He could come in. Yes, he's gonna have to back up, but again, we're talking about an empty parking lot at this point.
And your hours of operation are from what time?
Five to midnight.
Five in the morning to midnight. And the delivery truck would be coming from north to south, so it turns right. Well, one of the commissioners that just spoke, he had a gas station, and he knows the problem. How about your person that hired you? Are they okay where that tank is?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Just on the exiting of the parking lot, is, do you have signage that says no left turn?
Correct, yep.
Where is that sign located?
So these are the signs for the exit driveways. We have do not enter signs and right turn only signs located on both sides of the exit.
Thank you.
Okay.
And, sorry.
Go ahead.
Could you turn the pumps?
Could we turn the pumps? We thought this was the best layout for the site. If you turn the pumps.
Because aren't you a little overparked too? You could technically lose some parking spaces in front of the building maybe to fit it.
Is that crazy?
You crazy?
I don't know, trying to.
What?
Come up with something. So you wanna turn the pumps 90 degrees?
Yeah, I mean, if they were to go like that, is that crazy?
Like you're on the highway?
Yeah, I mean, this.
Like on 95? Are you talking about like 95?
They'd be skewed the other way. I'm not saying keep the spots. The spots would have to go away to make the room for the and then if I drive through pumps.
Pumps would be in the way.
Oh, my God.
Okay, are you sure? Any other questions?
Yeah, I have, still, I'm not clear. The truck comes in, turns right, goes where the tank is, delivers the fuel, and then it backs out into the highway?
No, he has to back into the tanks.
He has to go around the tanks and out through the exit driveway.
All right, this is a public hearing. We'll go to the public next. As before, if there are any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment, I think I saw a hand come on up and name an address.
Thanks again. You sound like a broken record. But my concern is, again, related to traffic. And there's two reasons. One is, I worked for Skorsky for many years. Coming north, there is a peak period. And I can tell you that there's some road rage incidents that we could probably find, you know, from police reports. It's nasty from Henry Mucie Highway to the Purdy Hill light. It's just bumper-to-bumper nasty. That's north. My concern really is for the south. Because when, if somebody's going south and they wanna turn in, it's two lanes. I live, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say, I live on 61 Hillcrest Road, which is just up north on 25. So, and I walk my dog on 25 all the time. I see it, I almost get run over on a regular basis because people are, and I watch, they're going off the road to get around people who are trying to turn into Northbrook or something else. The solution, we have Cumberland Farms, works, okay? We put that extra lane in, you know, there's only one way you can turn. That would work in this situation. But it requires a middle lane. Because people are gonna wanna go, and you can talk about intuitively and all that other happy bullshit.
Sir, you gotta address the commission, please.
Yeah, sorry. You can talk about all this intuitive thing, and it makes sense. No, when you put people coming home in the evenings and in the mornings trying to get to work, it's a stressful situation. They're trying to get the kids dealt with. We're dropped off. I'm just telling you. Proximity to Purdy Hill makes it really difficult in this section, just like the proximity to Eastern Road in Cumberland Farms north of that. So I'd ask you to take a good, hard look at it, and perhaps try to get a middle lane in there. I don't know. It's obviously a conjunctive solution with previous development as well.
Any other members here tonight? Come on down.
Good evening. My name is Joel Lenninger. I reside at 70 Huntingtown Road in Monroe. I just have a couple of questions. The butler-like building that's there, is that an existing building that we currently have? And I should probably know this because I drive by their house every day, but I don't. And my other question is, the existing wood-framed building, obviously, it's gonna be cheaper to renovate that, or they believe it's gonna be cheaper to renovate that, than tear the whole thing down and put up something new. Aesthetically, and I realize that we can't deal too much with aesthetics, but from an architectural point of view, it's really ugly. It merges a butler building with a little old house or whatever it is. I understand, and just like I understand from the presentation, the butler building section is for personal storage? Yes, yeah, let me look at that. Back to us. The, although we have no more snow anymore, that elevation is right down in a hole. So when we get five inches of snow, how does that snow get out of there? Does it get pushed into the back to the wetlands? Does it get trucked out of there? Because that retaining wall on the north side is substantial. And has anybody looked at that retaining wall recently with the old lovely fence that's hanging off the side of that? Will that be replaced, repaired? I don't know who's responsible for that. And the light trespass from Duchess right now trespass out onto Route 25 as well as the site. Will the board consider that, I realize it's not part of the application, but will the lighting also be focused down and no light trespass onto the highway? I'm not familiar with the drawings, so I don't know where the curb cut is from the project across the street where Duchess is. I know where it is, but I don't really know where it is on these plans in conjunction to their curb cuts. The right, left-hand turning signs, I would ask for some elevations of those. What are they really gonna look like? How big are they gonna be? Are they gonna be stuck on a metal pole that eventually falls to the left, falls to the right? Is it incorporated in the signage program that works with the existing monument sign? I really don't understand why we're leaving these ugly buildings up to bring in another gas station. And I would urge the Architectural Review Board, if they have to look at this, if they haven't looked at this, to make some really serious recommendations. Because they're gonna spend a lot of time and money putting new siding on there and painting the thing up and sticking windows in it and whatever. But you all know, it's really ugly right now with those orange posters saying, those gates. And so to that effect, I would say we're gonna have a better-looking product. And congratulations that we're improving something. Just really concerned about that elevation. The elevation drop from Duchess to this site just is gonna be a really uncomfortable experience, I think, from a board's perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lenninger. Yes, in the back.
My name is Mary Orsalo. I live on 136 Stanley Road, and I am also a member of Saver Stephanie. Similar concerns as I had over last application, and that is about traffic. The point that the gas station wants to go in is with, I believe it's called Pondview across the street, Duchess next door, and now this gas station. I think we're gonna have to hire a policeman full-time now on 25. I just can't see how it could be safe with those three establishments at that point on 25. I have some environmental concerns. The Paquana River, I believe it is, is right behind the proposed gas station. I would urge the folks at the commission and the Wetland Agency to really review that because we really don't wanna lose that river. It's beautiful. And I think that having another business like a gas station, you worry, I know it would be new, but you worry about leaching and so on. And last, I know, I'm seeing there's another new proposed gas station north on 25 on the corner of Pepper and 25. Yet another gas station. So we have to, I think, think about, again, the future of Monroe, the future of Route 25, how we want it to look. Thank you for your consideration.
These are seen now. All right, is there anyone else here tonight, any members of the public that would like to comment? Any members of the public online? Please raise your hand. Once again, any members of the public online that have any comments to the commission on this application, please raise your hand now. Okay, seen none. Then we'll go back to the applicant for the closing remarks.
Chairman, I'll let this be addressed in just a second. But I wanted to note, this building has received ARB approval. Secondly, the building, I mean, the project has received approval from the conservation division. But there's actually a significant environmental improvement. There's a reduction in the surface, and there's a water quality improvement. There's no water quality问题 on site today. There will be water quality issues installed. Certainly, there's gonna be a significant visual improvement of what's there today. It does conform to the zoning regulations in our system of 25. And I'd like to let Steve Santa Cruz address the specific issues that were raised.
Thank you, Steve Santa Cruz from CSGS, our company. Yeah, I mean, I hear the concern for the traffic. You know, I used to drive down Route 25 in the morning every morning to work. In the evening. You know, in terms of traffic trip generation, I mean, we're talking about a gas station versus, you know, 196 unit apartment building. It's kind of apples and oranges. And I would just say, with all the other gas stations in the area, convenience stores, the trip generation is not significant. You're not going out of your way to go to this gas station. There's other, there's five other gas stations. You're kind of driving along north, and I need gas. I'm gonna stop and get gas here, and I'm going to continue on my way. So I just wanted to make that comment. The driveway across the street is approximately, if you could see my, no, okay, sure. The driveway into 127 is located, it's faint on our plan, but here's the stop sign for that driveway, so you can kind of see where that's located. And the Duchess driveway is located here. We do have some sign details. We have our stop sign and on-site signs. We have our right turn only and do not enter signs shown on our plan as well. And there was a comment about the wetland concerns that they'll also address. And again, we went through the Wetlands Commission. They reviewed the plan and approved the plan as it stands. And again, we're reducing the amount of pavement on site, so that's a big plus. We're also adding stormwater infiltration and level spreaders. Those are gonna create a positive impact to the Bon River.
Okay, thank you.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'm sorry. I just wanted to point out the road is being widened at my client's expense as part of the DOT approval, so that you will be able to make a left-hand turn into this site when you proceed south, and a car will still be able to go by it going south. The tank, the fuel truck delivery issue, again, if this is approved by this commission and a condition of approval is added, it says the fuel truck deliveries can only be made when the store is, convenience store and gasoline station is closed. That becomes a condition of approval that goes on the land records as part of the special exception approval. It's noticed to the public. It's noticed at every, and it's binding upon not only this applicant, this landowner, but any subsequent landowner, any subsequent applicant. And lastly, it's in any, not only my client, but any gas station operator's best interest not to have a fuel oil truck come in while there's people with those pumps. I mean, that's the reason the delivery is happening at night. It's in my client's best interest as well as any subsequent owner or operator. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Would you like to close the hearing and then?
Nothing further.
Okay, we can close the hearing, Rick?
Yes.
All right, this hearing is hereby closed. Moving on. Next public hearing. Next public hearing is SCP 2023-0, number 1652A. This is 707 Main Street. This is a new hearing for a change of use. Commissioner Condon, you have the notice this evening?
Yes, in accordance with CGS 8-7D. Hearing will be held on Thursday, March 7th, 2:00 PM, or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting with in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall. SCP 2023-04, file number 1652A, 707 Main Street. Special exception permit application for proposed conversion of existing space for worship/church use located at 707 Main Street. Accessory map 82 Lot 38. 707 Properties LLC owner, Jay Edwards and Associates LLC representative. Notice was published twice in voices on Wednesday, February 15th, and February 22nd.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, exhibit number one, application set and plans. Two, Health Department comments. Number three, a letter from neighbor.
And that is all, Mr. Chairman. Okay, thank you. To the applicant.
Good evening. Jason Edwards, Jay Edwards Associates, Jr., 272 Road, Eastern. The owner, I guess, of 707 Main Street. This is a former 707 restaurant that was constructed back in the late 90s. That was a season-sized restaurant with a banquet facility. There's a, as you can see, a large party pot that's located just north of Duncan North, it's on Route 25, which is just north of North Porcando's. Restaurant back here, Hillcrest Drive, I'm a year past the other side. I'm not entirely sure how many years ago, but in the last five years or so, the restaurant closed down. It's now an auction house, and the auction house is now selling the property, under contract to sell the property to House of Worship. So we're here to get the permits to change that use. There's no plans to change anything on the site or the building. See, the current site layout is here. As I said, this was designed as a restaurant banquet facility, so there's a monumental hall. A very large seating system. I think there's 198 parking spaces currently. Our proposed use is only going to be about 50. Septic capacity is about double what we would be required for the use we're proposing. So there's no issues there. There's no current proposal to change any of the outside of the building, or for that matter, the inside of the building. Everything essentially remains the same. They're just gonna move in and utilize the space. They're just going to move in and utilize the space. We're going to have a floor plan here as well. So the interior layout is depicted on this floor plan. I did make one change today. I have some paper copies of this. Sorry. It's perfect. The only change, originally, we're planning to, the applicant was originally planning to use these try areas as classrooms potentially for their prisoners, but then they've decided that they're going to kind of lease those spaces out for commercial use to some other use. They don't know what to do at this time, there's going to be commercial space available for lease. You got to come back in for anything that would require a special permit, anything else, right, you can get some, you know, zoning, directly, if you don't have any tenants in mind, but the plan is to use some of that space as commercial. The worship services take place on Sundays only. They are from 8:30 to 1:30 on Sundays. The general headcount is around 25 to 50, I believe. There's once or twice a year where they may have 100 people come in on a Sunday. Other than that, it's a relatively small number of, small anticipated traffic volume for the site, and then we're only going to be on Sundays. They do have other facilities in New York and New Jersey. They're just trying to expand up to this area. And I do have Edward Lowes present here, if you have any questions on the operations. He's the gentleman who's going to be running the business of the worship house. I think that's about all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Go to the commissioners for questions first. I'll start on my right, Commissioner Smirgianoff.
About 25.
At least so, they're trying to expand that, but yeah, as of now, that's what they expect.
Pretty big.
Yeah.
All right, questions?
Thanks, Tom.
So the entrance from the street could service the church, whatever.
Yeah, they have multiple entrances here, so the main entrance from the street, as we show the street side here, that would potentially be the entrance for the commercial spaces. They also have an entrance here that comes in from the side that would service the church.
So that was my question, so if they want to use the same entrance or just separate?
The idea is to keep them separate.
Thanks. So regular services are on Sundays. Do they do any like funeral services or weddings that might be on a different day of the week, nothing like that? And then is there any plan for signage?
Not at this time. I think there's an existing monument sign there, so that would be reused.
Just reuse, okay. Other questions? Thanks.
Questions?
So you're going to want to split this in half, make one commercial and one at church?
We would like to save or utilize the space in front for commercial use. It's a separate space already. If you look at the floor plan, there's the ability to close it off so they get out of their office, let's say, in there, or some other commercial use. They'd have to come, you know, back before the commission or the zoning staff to get any permits for that.
So is that going to take away from your spaces?
I'm sorry.
Did we calculate and taken away from your spaces on the commercial use?
I mean, we have over 120 extra spaces, so we'd have to provide calculations for whatever new use came in when they came in, but I don't see it being an issue considering it's only about 1,200 square feet there.
And is this like, I don't know how they put it, is this, I think, is it like a registered church? Is it, what is this? I mean, basically, is it, you know, like every Catholic church has a parish church and they have requirements?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, I'm familiar.
It's tax exempt?
Yeah.
My name is Edward Lowes. It's a Dalzim practice, so it's almost like, similar to Buddhist temple.
Yep.
Yeah.
So is it tax exempt?
It is tax exempt.
And so how would you plan on doing that between splitting this building?
Well, I guess the reason that we maintain the retail space, I mean, the commercial space, so instead of the entire property will be exempt from property tax, so some of them will be still paying taxes. So whatever that business that comes in will calculate the space, I guess, whatever the town's tax law is, based on that.
So we'd have to put that on the plan, Rick?
Yes, absolutely.
That's not on this plan?
Depends on how common, I mean, space, how many square feet they use.
You'll have to come back with that.
Because we have similar situation in New York, so you can commercialize, utilize part of it, and the rest of part of it, we lease it out, city charges, whatever, that's not being used as religious use. So we're still paying taxes on those.
No, no, I know, but the plan has to, has to show that. Plan basically would have to show.
We do show the commercial space, it's going to remain commercial, so you'd be taxed on, tax square foot into the bill, whatever the square foot is here. The plan I just handed out shows the square foot of the commercial space that sits in the front. I just submitted that.
That's okay, it's okay.
So you've got roughly 1,200 square feet of commercial space in the front that would be still taxable, and the remainder would be, as of now, it would become part of the church, and if we came back in to occupy those spaces, then that square foot would be adjusted accordingly, however things will be.
This might be a ridiculous question. You said you have another church or temple that has the commercial use.
Right.
Some businesses attract businesses. Do you, is, do you see like a regular commercial business that tends to like to pop up near the church, or?
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't an issue in New York, so I mean.
Well, no, I just meant, so, you know, like sometimes Starbucks pop up next to Chipotle's or like something like that. Is there some, is your church, is there a business that likes to try to pop up near your?
I couldn't, I couldn't speak.
No, okay, that's, that's, all right, thank you.
So do you get your status here for Connecticut?
No, yeah, we can, we cannot establish a status unless the building is purchased and it's actually renovated into a full use temple. Before, we can actually apply for non-coverage stats, because they want to see everything being built before we can apply for anything. So that's, that's why we, we trying to get this thing going.
Did you do a traffic study?
No, we did not. The existing use was far greater than anything we're proposing. The former banquet all use was approved for 198 spaces. I don't see this approaching anywhere near that, so we didn't feel necessary.
No, but because you have 198 spaces that is of worship, and those people all leave at one time. And I understand if it was a restaurant, they don't all leave at one time. Was it calculated in that if you had a full thing about it, they all left at one time because that's what would happen after the service is over? Do a traffic study on that.
We did not study the traffic on that, no, but again, the worship services are only on Sundays.
That's my opinion. They all come at the same time too. They all come at the same time too, pretty much.
Any other questions?
All right. Then the answer is to two nutrients.
Mr. Mynne?
I really don't, I mean, I don't have much of a question, just, just because I honestly, I don't know the faith. So like certain churches will have like a Bible study during the week, and certain churches will have like a gathering of some sort during the week where they do bake sales, and then they sell them on, at the end of Mass on Sunday or whatever. Do you guys plan on doing any of that stuff?
No.
Because you do have a kitchen here.
Right, but that was, that kitchen is already there, okay, because it was a restaurant.
Right, 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 sure.
Right, so.
And you don't plan on having some sort of Bible study or?
We, from past experience, from other locations, we don't do that.
Okay.
Maybe have, because we pray like, you know, every Sunday, and then every first of the month and 15th of the month. Usually, first of the month, 15th of the month, only two or three members shows up. You know, we do the praying, we light up the incense, then we're gone. That's the normal procedures. We don't, we don't do bake sales, we don't do special events, we don't do weddings, we don't do films.
All right, thank you.
One more.
I think the volunteer has.
He's got questions.
So the kitchen space hasn't been used since the restaurant?
I know, I think I said it shows, it shows kitchen, but it's vacant right now. I think it's part of the storage.
It's been dormant, not used?
Yeah.
And you don't plan on using that, there's?
We don't know at this point. Other, other locations, it varies, one has, one has kitchen, we prep up light food for the members, because one of the religions that we practice is a religious community, so we don't buy any outside food, we just prep our own food. So that we might consider putting a kitchen in the future, but at this point, we don't have any plans, but I'm sure there will be construction phases. We're going to have to do, you know, the shrine, the altar, we're going to have to put it in, so we'll submit a formal construction plans for, for building department to approve it.
Yeah, it's a good idea to figure out what you're doing with this kitchen area, because it's substantial in that building.
It's, the whole entire building is humongous, so, yeah.
And there's obviously things that go along with the kitchen, like re-separators and that kind of thing. Has that been looked into?
The building is, has been, hasn't been using it as a restaurant for a long time. It's been an auction house, from what I understand, right now, currently just part of the storage areas. So there's no kitchen equipment in there, there's no, there's no hood, no gas line, so I'm not sure how, I mean, I'm sure when the time they disconnected, everything has been disconnected properly.
So there is equipment in there now, or there isn't?
There's no equipment in there, no, there's not. But if we're going to put equipment in there, we'll submit an actual plan for it.
Right. I said it's. I have no other questions.
All right, thank you. And I'm going to go to the public at this point. This is a public hearing. So as mentioned before, any members of the public that would like to comment, please raise your hand. I see one in the black. Come on up. Press his name and address for the record.
My name is Rosemary Swalinski. I'm the owner of 707 Main Street and an auctioneer. I have, we purchased the building in 2010, and specifically because we needed to have the large parking and to be able to hold our auctions there. Up until the pandemic, my last auction was in 2019. We would fill every single parking place. We were approved by the town of Monroe to conduct auctions there and to be able to hold a very large number of people. All of our auctions occurred on Sundays. We currently do them on Wednesdays. They're now online, but we've had no problems at all with parking. In fact, our neighbors would allow us, you know, I mean, they did fantastic. We've never had any issues at all with the traffic, so I don't think that warrants a traffic study. In addition, in regards to the kitchen, all of the infrastructure is there to put in a kitchen. When we purchased the building, they had a liquidation auction where they sold off all of the equipment, but the huge seven system, the grease traps, the electric system, it has a 1,200 amp system of power. It has a multi-unit air conditioning heating system, a very large banquet room. All the infrastructure is there, the equipment just needs to come back in. When we did the remodel, the drain lines, the town had us just plug them, so we did everything to the building code, but it'd be very easy to go ahead and install. So for them to put in a small kitchen for what they're talking about would be very simple. Previously, the previous owners were doing not only wedding banquets, but they were also operating the restaurant at the same time. So if you have any questions for me, I can probably answer those questions in regards to the building of this.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public here? I said it? For now, if we have questions, we can address them. Any other members I think I saw in gray, come on.
Hello, Anna Fitzpatrick. I live in the condos at 26 Main Circle. My concern is with the traffic. Even though they want to start small at only 25 to 50 people, they're certainly looking to lease the space, they're looking to expand. It's hard enough for us to get out of the condo complex during peak hours, taking that left onto Route 25, and if they are going to have a consistent, consistent services and even to leasing to fill up those spaces, I think there will be a traffic impact to us. If traffic pulls back up, it's hard to make a left onto Route 25 or off of Route 25. And then it's, it's kind of what you guys said too, right? It's everybody arriving at the same time, everybody leaving at the same time, and I think it's going to generate a lot, it has the potential to generate a lot of traffic on Route 25. Thanks. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
I'm with her. Again, Margaret Lee, 26 Main Circle. I truly oppose to this conversion of usage, based on new information, I'll just imply a little bit there before I go into what I was going to say. And that is, seems as though this is almost, I have no objection to any religion of any kind, don't get me wrong, but this really seems to be more of a purchase for the sake of obtaining a commercial property that can be converted to other usage, and I would be concerned that that has a large kitchen there, potential there, things are very vague as described at this point, if that kitchen could again become a restaurant. Now, you can say that, well, once it was, but when once it was, was before the traffic had become even worse on Route 25. It's really amplified over the past seven, eight, nine years, totally unbearable. So what I wanted to add to what Anna had to say about the traffic situation is to just give you a little bit of background here, because some of you may not really be aware of what Northbrook is, and I am from Northbrook. North was built in 1984 to 86, 318 units. It's probably one of the biggest single residential entities in Monroe. Those 318 units have approximately, probably more, that comes to 638 cars, vehicles. That doesn't include caregivers, it doesn't include children coming out of the car or to their cars. It doesn't include school buses, it doesn't include service people or delivery trucks. This is a huge traffic issue for us to get out of Dodge. When people need to go out to go to work, we cannot turn left on that road. It's gotten to the point now where in order to get to go left, we have to go right up to Bradford Green and the Mason Farm Market, which I love, don't get me wrong, but there's a traffic light there. And so people go up there, can turn around in Bradford Green at that traffic light and come back, and then they didn't go south. It's a nightmare, just as bad as what everybody else is describing, but for us, it's personal. You know, we've tried so hard, we talked state, what the town is going through, it's the reassessments of traffic issues, and we asked for a traffic light to be placed there, to no avail. So all we can do now is just say, please, don't, don't load us up with even more. Right now, Hillcrest comes down right across from us. If we want, if we're both, people are coming out from either one of these two streets, we're doing a U-turn around each other to get out, to go the directions we want to go. It's a dance, it is dangerous, and the traffic backup is horrific. Cars are trying to press bias when we're doing it, somebody wants to walk across the road, it's a nightmare. We need to somehow control this 1, 255 issue, and we'd like it to stay with us, and just please don't add more to it than we already have. Thank you for listening, Jimmy.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public here? Any other members of the public here tonight? Come right up.
Good evening. I'm Joel Lenner. I reside at 70 Huntingtown Road. After hearing this presentation, it's really a very creative way to incorporate a religious facility along with the potential for commercial in ways to support their congregation. And I am in favor of this application. I think it brings diversity to our community. It gives this organization an opportunity to grow. Obviously, one question might be is what is the maximum capacity that you'd be looking at? But this was a restaurant, was a profitable restaurant for a number of years. There is quite a bit of parking. And so I would support this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lenner.
Anyone else here tonight that would like to comment on this application? Anyone online that would like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. Seeing none, then we'll go back to the applicant.
Jason Edwards for the record. So this building is currently permitted as an auction house that has no maximum capacity that I'm aware of. So we're proposing to centrally use a portion of that and, you know, far less than the auction house could potentially use. I don't see how or why our application should be required to provide a new traffic study when we're proposing to decrease the potential overall output of traffic from the site. If we're currently permitted as a restaurant that could have a full parking lot or an auction house that could also have a full parking lot, what's the difference in what we're proposing now?
Okay, would you like to close your hearing?
I have one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
We're done. I just, for the applicant, you know, stating the obvious here, we're up here on behalf of the community, this community. Are there any members that are from this area that will be attending this House of Workshop?
Not in Monroe, but nearby, New Havens, Stanford. So there's some people close by. So we're trying to establish new members here. That's our mission.
You're seeing it as a central location to existing members right in the area?
That's why we're branching out. We want to recruit more members.
The members now that are in the area are going out to New York?
Could be you, could be him, could be anyone. That's our mission.
So the members now are traveling to New York?
No. Locally, we're trying to get people here. But we do have, you know, supporting group, you know, the lecturer, that they do come in from New York. You know, I'm not a lecturer, I'm not qualified for it. So, but there is people supporting good fun in New York, but trying to recruit, you know, members in locally.
Yeah, we're trying to do what's best for Monroe. That's the, I understand. That's all.
Okay, then Rick, we can close the hearing. Yes, Mr. Chairman, the hearing's closed.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have site development plan. This is subdivision SCP 2023-04, file number 1270C, 1092 Monroe Turnpike. Oh, there's no notice this way. Other exhibits?
Exhibit A, application two from the Health Department, and that is all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and for the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. For the record, I'm Deputy Lieutenant Junior, professional engineer with an office at 56th Circle in Seymour. Also with me tonight is Tracy Lewis, surveyor on the project. And to Tracy's right-hand side is Jack Diallo Barra, the owner and applicant of the property. Our project is not located on Route 25. We have a 7.7 acre parcel that's on the east side of Monroe Turnpike. This is about 400, 500 feet south of the East Village Road intersection. We've got a 7.7 acre parcel. We have bought some residential property to the north and portion of the south. There's two pieces of residential property or borders to the south. We have bought the Massey High School field also to the south. And then further to the east, there is an open space parcel that's associated with the Robin Lane subdivision. Our property ends here at Hertz Brook. And there's a wetland area and regulated flood plain area at the base of that slope chasing to the Brook. The parcel currently contains an existing single-family house and a driveway that comes downward off of Monroe Turnpike. Our proposal is to divide this property, basically create a new property along the existing driveway and divide the property into two building lots. Lot number two contains the existing house. That's a three-acre lot, 0.15 acres on the accessway for a total of 3.15 acres. Lot number one contains 2.1 acres, another 0.58 acres of the accessway from Monroe Turnpike for a total of 3.39 acres. Both of these lots are considered rear lots in accordance with your new interior lot, rear lot regulation. The lot number one has 45 feet of frontage and lot number two has approximately 130. We are proposing a open space parcel all the way to the east. It consists of 1.15 acres, which is 15% of the parcel prior to development. This open space parcel butts obviously Massey High School Field here to the south, Hertz Brook and the existing open space parcel on the east side of Hertz Brook. The existing accessway. Okay, the existing driveway that comes downward, that driveway is a 12-foot wide paved driveway. That driveway will be widened out and it'll dish off six feet south side in order to comply with regulations. There's a little bit of grading that's required to accomplish that. Proposing that six-foot widening and that driveway will come down into the new house area. That stormwater that's generated from the house will be infiltrated with some water quality or stormwater galleys. The site is underlain by coarse sand and gravel, so there's really no issues with stormwater management or septic systems on the lot. The existing both parcels can be served by their own individual well. Wetlands has reviewed the application and indicated that they'll require a detailed site plan in order to permit lot number one. And the Health Department has also reviewed the application and indicated a site plan would be required for lot number one. Part of our application and in your package, we're asking for a waiver of section 111-303C of your subdivision regulations. The proposed open space parcel contains 62% steep slopes greater than 20% and 34% of inlet wetlands and watercourses, leaving only 4% of the proposed open space parcel as usable open space per your regulations. We believe that this proposed open space along Hertz Brook is, offers a protection that would link up with the open space on the opposite side of Hertz Brook as well as the open space at the high school. In our opinion, the open space preserves the wildlife habitat adjacent to Hertz Brook and protects those steep slopes and environmentally sensitive areas. So there's this steep slope on this side that we're proposing as part of the open space. We believe it's a very simple application. That's really the summary of it.
Thank you. The Commissioners for questions, starting with.
I'm okay with the waiver.
Okay. No questions, okay with the waiver.
So you still have to bring this to Wetlands?
We submitted the subdivision application to Wetlands. They reported back to you that they have no issues with the subdivision for the development of the lot. They want to see a site plan.
So you don't have an approval from them yet?
Not of the individual lot. We have approval from them for the subdivision, yes.
I have no questions right now.
No questions?
No questions.
Anything I would say?
This house is so close to the Massey Fields that, you know, whoever buys that house should be notified of the lights and there's gonna be noise. And that's just the deal.
Consider that. We were looking at some of the other places on the property to put that house. You know, the further we pushed it back, closer we got to the field. But right now, we select that up in the front part of the lot. Guess it's. Yeah. Where?
Rick, do you have anything?
No, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, this is the first proposal under a new regulation. The Commission decided to broaden our subdivision regs to allow this to happen. So A, they don't have to go to zoning board of appeals to get relief. And B, subject to this Commission's review to make sure it's in the best interest of the town of Monroe and the immediate neighborhood. You can see that they're trying to minimize the curb cuts. So it's a win-win situation because of your regulations. Okay.
Do you have anything else you'd like to close here?
That's really all I have. I believe it's a simple, straightforward application.
All right, then we'll close the hearing now. Thank you. Can I take five minutes?
Yes. Okay, it's 9:53. Time Monroe Fund and Zone Commission regular meeting, but second 2023 back in session. For deliberations and determinations. We'll start with the SCP 2023-02, file number 1658126 Main Street that we heard tonight. So deliberating tonight will be the five regular members. Unfortunately.
Two Doms are out.
Doms are out, yes. So we heard this, this is the second night that we've heard from them. The first night, we asked for many different things and they pretty much complied with all of them as far as I could see. Leon has concern about the gas trucks, but you know, the town has duty to watch things. I mean, there's certain things that, you know, that could happen that we have to watch for. I mean, if, yes, if they sell it, somebody else comes in and they want to deliver during the day, which doesn't make any sense. And it's something we'd have to look for. But to me, I don't have a problem with that.
Oof.
Well, and traffic, I mean, it makes sense. People are going to stop going north. Not going south. There's plenty of gas stations on the south side of 25 that they're going to. I think they've done everything they could. They're gonna widen the road.
I think that's a big thing to kind of consider too, is the actual improvements that are gonna be happening, not just to the property. But the fact that we're gonna get 25 widened there where there's potential for a whole lot more development coming in right around there as we saw. I think that's a great benefit.
Yeah, it's a dilapidated life store at this point.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna be tight inside. I understand that.
Oh, no, long-term, long-term for the town, there's better uses of that property than a gas station.
It's been vacant for how long now?
That's, that's.
The first pro, anyone's coming front of us for, yeah.
That's, that's, just because it's the first doesn't mean it's the, it's gonna be the only.
It's a difficult spot.
It is a difficult spot.
They're gonna bring in more traffic. It'll only be worse.
I disagree. I disagree on that part.
What do you think are better used for me? I mean.
Well, if it was, if it was a store.
It's a destination.
At one time, he wanted to get approved to do a used car lot there. That never proceeded. That's, we've done that before.
It doesn't have more traffic though?
No, that's less, no.
No, sorry, not, more new traffic?
No, you have only.
This gas station's not gonna bring new traffic. It's gonna get the people that are already there to already drive by.
It's gonna bring people in and out.
As opposed to a destination.
Well, I'm saying, no.
You have more entrances and exits, yes.
It's not like, you know, you have more of a volume to gas station than you would like a used car lot. People that show up one time.
But you're going in and out.
And I don't have, I have no concern that if it was a gas station, there was more space. I have a lot of concern about that because I used to own one, okay? And I've had serious problems that happened at my gas station, okay? Where people that, when they were getting gas and they back up, I had people backing the people and get caught in between two cars. And the same thing is if, you know, like he says, okay, well, it's gonna be delivered at night and all that kind of stuff. And I have all that. But now we have to police that. And God forbid that if a tractor trailer comes in there during the day or something like that and somebody gets killed on that piece of property, I have concerns over because you're going through where people are gonna get gas and you're coming out where people are gonna get gas. And so, and all these people that are coming out, they're all gonna have to come out that way. So they're gonna have to come in.
Well, there's only one way in.
This way, pulling this way. And I don't know how this guy is turning around to get out.
That concerns me.
Because he's gonna have to turn around and back up to get out.
Where they're going.
Or it's not gonna be back and forth driving. They're gonna go.
The island's 24 feet.
It's pretty simple.
You're gonna have two turns to go north though. They have to go down by Duchess. They have two pumps on each one of these islands. See, I own the gas station, so I know. These people that come in, they're gonna have to go here. That's pretty obvious. And here. I don't know how this guy is getting out because he.
It's a lot of the concerns about traffic.
Yes, you can't come. It's only one way out. And so you, nobody even looked at these two islands and how these people are getting out. The two wouldn't be bad, but one is gonna be horrible because the guy's gonna have to turn.
So now if I'm coming in here and I'm gonna pump my gas.
Right.
And let's say all the islands are empty when I'm filling it. My thought is, I'm not gonna stop here. I'm gonna drive out around and I'm gonna pump right here.
Well, I already can go out. And I mean, that's the same thing I do with Cumberland Farms now or something.
If your gas, that's great if your gas is on that side.
On that side, well, yeah, I'm gonna.
But if it's not on that side.
Then I'm just gonna pull in here.
Right, but there's no, there's no way. And then what happens over here? Like I'm saying to you is like.
So you gotta remember a car.
So some guy's gonna come in here and he's gonna go here. And this guy's gonna try coming in here and go here.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna have two cars, one here and one here. One of them is gonna have to back up.
Yeah.
Or this one's gonna have to back up.
It happens to me. I get, I pull in, I pull in, another car pulls in in front of me because it's all one side. Car pulls in behind me, then I gotta sit there and I gotta wait or I gotta try to get out. I mean.
You see the way, you see the way that Cumberland Farms was designed, okay? There's flow. There's mass flow. There's a massive flow there. This is a tight spot. And I have very, very major concerns about the turning radius in here even for a car. Like I didn't really think about it with lane one and lane six. Well, lane six, he's gonna go back out that way. But lane one and lane two, he may be able to make the turn. But lane one is not making that turn. So if somebody comes around there and wants to go, because there's not gonna be, you're not gonna be able to direct the traffic. They're gonna have to go one way or the other. not gonna be able to direct the traffic, they're gonna have to go one way or the other, especially for this. One, they're gonna have to go around this way in order to get gas and even with two would be the better way to do it, but that doesn't mean people don't drive like that. It's not set up like that in this, in this, in this.
Well, because no one's entering through here, so they're entering this way.
They have to enter that way. That's exactly right. And they only can exit this way.
They enter short and then you're.
And they have to all exit this way. The way this is designed, you can't exit this way.
Yeah.
So my concern is that this just doesn't work.
I think the flow's gonna be, they're gonna come in, they're gonna go around, they're gonna pull into the spots because that's.
You're gonna get people, you're gonna get people southbound trying to get in there. You're gonna.
Well, of course.
When it's, when it's not super busy, right.
But they're, they're putting in a turning, a lane there so people can pass around.
So the reality is you're getting, you're getting winding out of this, which is huge. You've got a, an eyesore right now that has been an eyesore for a long, long, long time. Nothing is happening over there. We're trying to promote and this is definitely something going in the right direction. And speaking to the, the refueling, Leon, I, I understand what you're saying as far as it may not be optimal, but think about all the gas stations that are currently in operation that are successful and doing business that are a fraction of the size of this. I went back over there, I studied how wide it was. Originally, I was thinking it wasn't a good spot as well, too narrow. Went back, realized with the hill cut out, with the retaining wall in, it's a lot wider visually than I originally thought. And I can vision a truck being able to turn around in that area. Is it perfect? Maybe not, but it's a heck of a lot bigger than a lot of gas stations that are in business right now that are figuring out a way to refuel safely on a regular basis.
So on lane one, how do you plan on getting the cars out of there?
What do you mean getting out of there? A car getting gas, getting out of there?
How do you plan on getting?
They're gonna drive straight out.
No, not necessarily. That's only if they're coming this way. If they're going this way. Certain people have gas, but I'm just telling you.
I mean, people are gonna be stupid. I mean, you can't.
Well, they're gonna be, people are gonna be stupid.
Change a map for, you know, a plan for people that are gonna be stupid.
I'm just saying, there isn't, there isn't not, they're gonna have to back around, they're gonna have to back up in order to get out. Am I not right? If they come on this side of it, if they come in this way and go here, there's no way they're making that turn and not backing up here and coming out this way. Because some people's gas doors are on the right and some are on the left. If these are all filled, you think the guy is gonna wait for these people? No, he's gonna go over here. And I see it, I see it up at, at Casco's, the same thing happens up there, up in, up in Danbury. It's a disaster up there to get people in and out. And they have it one way. What I'm saying to you is like, it, it's, it should be one way in and one way out. So then you would have to make it all come in this way, but you can't because the way the pumps are designed, you can't make the traffic flow. So traffic is gonna flow both ways. There's no way that I.
So if you're facing the building, you're saying and you're in lane one.
In lane one.
You can't loop around. You can't go towards the building and loop around and, and exit.
Because you only have one exit out and that's.
But why can't you loop around the pumps and leave that way?
Turn here and come out.
Or go to the right.
Mike, how many feet you think you have here?
Uh, at least, you got 20 feet from here if you make this square, plus you've got the width of.
28 feet, yeah.
28 feet. Yeah, you can make a turn 28 feet.
There you go.
No, 28 feet, where?
28 feet out by the arrow.
20 feet here.
So you think a car can make a complete turn?
Well, depending on the vehicle.
I, I'm just telling you that.
The answer to that's no, but I.
I have.
You can loop around these pumps. You can come out of there, go right, loop around and then leave the gas station.
So it's, um, what do you think?
I, I can't, I think it's, I, I don't like it. I'm a no.
Sounds like we're leaning towards approval. You wanna draft approval then?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, and we'll go, we'll vote, um. You ready to vote now?
No, let me prepare, no, I need to prepare a resolution.
All right.
With the conditions, strict conditions.
All right.
And the baller is gonna be on there too.
Yeah.
From the plan.
All right, let's move on. That was quick. Church. Saw the church tonight. Obviously, they have enough parking. They're talking about 25. The 50 people, I don't see that becoming the size of the Catholic church in town, which does a lot more than they plan on doing with 25 or 30 people.
What, um, what's the current use?
An auction house, but they're not using it.
Unoccupied, former was an auction house.
Auction house. And at the time, how many, do we know how many people?
Well, it was full. Heard the owner.
He used every space.
Said every Sunday.
And they left on Sundays. So if anything, this approval is gonna.
This is not gonna be a traffic nightmare at all.
It's gonna knock down the traffic and then on top of that.
Well, it's not gonna knock down.
Well, no, I mean, it's gonna.
There's no traffic there now.
But then there was, I know there was the concern that this could become a restaurant, but it specifically couldn't because we're changing the use.
They'd have to come back and start over.
We'd have to start, yeah, so if anything, this is.
Pretty straightforward.
Going to prevent what could be much more of a traffic nightmare.
Restaurant.
Yeah. Five, five.
It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Are we all leaning towards an approval on this?
Yes, I am.
Is this work from a tax perspective with the commercial space? Is the commercial space taxed from day one?
No, only on income.
That's correct.
Only on what?
So we lose that as tax revenue for what?
The, on the church.
Well, I'm asking about the commercial space.
So the commercial space will be taxed.
Taxed from day one.
The amount, what the chairman is saying is based on what you submit to the assessor's office annually. So if it's vacant, uh, there'll be a minimal taxation on the real estate.
Right.
The bigger taxes is on, on equipment and personal property provision.
So Rick, on, on a traffic study, right? Isn't there different requirements if it's a church and not a church and stuff like that?
Oh, no, you're absolutely correct, Leon. So why wouldn't we have asked for that? No, that's, that's your call during.
I don't think that we need to be on that burden on them of a traffic study when they're going from a full auction house to a small.
This was, this was a lot and they were putting a church.
Yeah, they don't need a traffic study.
But in this case, I think.
But I'm just saying, isn't there a difference between being a church and just a regular, like restaurant?
Absolutely.
Sunday to Sunday.
You, you are in your right for thinking about that.
Right. That's what I thought.
The consensus wasn't there though.
Right. And that's, that's what I thought because it's, it creates, it's a more traffic generator when it's a church than it is if it's a restaurant. I believe.
Yes, but it's not a restaurant, it's an auction house.
No, no, I'm talking about it when it turns over to be a church, it's a different traffic generator than it is, than it is if it was a restaurant. It's definitely different. And I, I thought that we should have had a traffic study done so that we were secure with that because I know, I see a lot of time in churches that they have a cop out there directing traffic because it's, it gets to be a big deal.
Blackrock turf.
I mean, and you know what I'm saying to you. That's why I asked that we do that and, and we just blew that right off, but we should have done that. And I think that that's would have been.
And you will get an opportunity based on.
Once they've made this.
Future uses, you have a second shot at it.
All right, that's, that was my concern.
Any other concerns on this?
No.
All right, then you wanna draft a?
A favorable, uh, resolution, okay?
I just wanna say something about it though. Um, sorry, um, I know there was a little mention of just, you know, where the parishioners might be coming from and whether we're servicing the town of Monroe. And I know we consider that, okay, we're losing a tax source, but you also have to remember that sometimes it is a good thing to bring people into the town for the other businesses.
Yes.
And I know they say that, gas in general, the gas station, um, but you know, there's great vegetarian options in town. Um, there are, you know, there's, there's gonna be at added benefit and sometimes the church uses are good because you kind of get, but you know what you're getting in that sense with the church community as opposed to some other businesses and stuff. Um, so it's a big thing to kind of weigh that not always on the fourth line when you're thinking about the church and you're like, ah, we're gonna lose the tax base and stuff. So just not for everyone.
And you're not losing all tax base.
Exactly, exactly. Especially with this one.
All right, so we have three drafts in front of us. Um, it's five, which is Nutmeg.
Which one was that?
Wait a minute, it was Nutmeg and Hornet.
No, we don't have Nutmegs.
We have Nutmegs.
No, that's the subdivision.
Yeah, we have subdivision. Subdivision approval, SUP 2023-01. File number 1270C. That's it. That's the, um, lot, the division of the lot that we just heard.
All right.
Make the motion to approve, uh, SUP 2023, file number 1270, as drafted.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
No, sir.
All right. Call the roll.
Discussion, no. Rick, yeah, question for a waiver, right?
Yes, that's for the quality of the open space. It's a steep area that goes down to the brook.
Okay.
Uh, Conservation Commission has reviewed it.
Yeah.
And they're in support of protecting the, uh, natural environment.
Okay.
You, you wanna scrutinize that section.
Right, okay.
In this instance, it makes sense. You wanna preserve that.
They don't have an issue with it? Can't do anything with it?
No, it's because it's next to the brook.
Okay, that's what I had a question.
I think it was just a cliff.
Let's vote.
All right, call the roll, starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Mayne, yes.
Okay, subdivision and approve. Congratulations.
You're the first.
We have the Gateway Commons, mixed-use development, four Main Streets, Monroe, Connecticut, 780 and the 71, 7180 and 7192 Main Street. This is the, um.
Half Trumbull, half Monroe.
Half Trumbull, Monroe. Mixed-use development, so this we put in a few, um, we added some steps.
Yes, we did. Rick, you wanna go over it?
Yeah, okay, um, the major comments and concerns of the commission were as follows. Commissioner supported the creation of a designated school bus pickup drop-off location on Main Street in front of the development in the marking of a student crosswalk from the building to the bus area. This issue is still a work in progress. The Board of Ed ultimately may allow buses to go inside. Right now, they do not, okay? But we have all seen changes down the road.
Yes.
Uh, staff will be making referral on the 127 too because that's a long driveway as well. Right now, the drop-off is on 25. You saw, you saw the designated area. Commissioner noted the need, uh, for the owner of the development to provide a minimum of 10% of affordable apartment units in accordance with the mixed-use regs and the Monroe's Affordable Housing Plan. Remember, we did that Affordable Housing Plan last year. We have, uh, these sites that the commission has said not this to happen. This is site one, site one, uh, 127 Main Street's the other one, and the third one is the elderly housing. They're trying to secure the HUD grant.
Right.
Uh, the, the owner of the property will be responsible in the income, uh, level and the annual reporting to the town. Some towns have housing authorities that do this. Monroe does not. So the onus is on the applicant and that'll be in the, in the land records. Commissioner noted the need, uh, future need to provide access to, for the occupants to the adjacent trail system. You heard them, they want to connect. Right now, ultimately, there will be a sidewalk system that goes to Victoria Drive. Victoria has sidewalks on both sides and then it goes to the trail system, but they would like to provide another trail system internally. That will require a lot more thought and, and work, but it is worthy to achieve that goal. The commission noted the need of the two towns superintendent of schools to coordinate the handling of the school-aged children occupying the apartment units. As stated at the hearing and confirmed by staff, both towns have talked jointly on this, whether it's the fire marshal, police department, superintendent of schools. Everyone has coordinated this. This is the last, uh, action by a land use board. Monroe, uh, has already approved the wetlands, Trumbull has approved wetlands, zoning and the water pollution control. So this is the last, uh, action by a land use board needed for this, uh, development.
So any discussion amongst the members here?
All right, I think I've got, first, so Rick, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, the school children and what part we're gonna be taxed on, how, how does that work? I mean, is it, it gets sent to the assessor's office?
Yeah, I, I left out, uh, the assessor's office. The assessor's office is also.
In here for the assessor's office. So they would have to report it to the.
So let's, let's put that with it then.
Yeah.
Okay, other discussion?
No, sir.
All right, then the chair, I want to make a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve SUP 2023-01, file number 1649A with the addition of the tax.
Assessor's office notification.
Okay, motion, I need a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, I need further discussion.
No, sir.
Not a call at all, starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Mayne, yes.
Westland, yes.
Hey, motion passes. Um, and finally, I think, but not.
Yeah, 125 Gardner Road.
Lastly, but not least, all right, 125 Gardner Road. Now, I know, and this is not, this is the, um, what's the word? This is not a very popular.
It is.
Application. Now, um.
Mr. Chairman, I have all the facts and figures for you, so after your discussion, I'll go over those.
So we did ask them to raise the, um, pad elevation. Um, the original elevation, they wanted to excavate 100,000 cubic yards more or less. So they raised the pad and now they want to excavate, what?
81,000.
80,000. So they made a concession. They're not going to put the pad weighing station in, so he's not going to be selling it right off the bat to other developers. it right off the bat to other developers. I'm sure he has enough projects throughout the Northeast that he'll be able to use the materials himself. I don't think there's going to be any problems with selling it. The site is a mess. All you've all been out there. Needs to be fixed. It needs to be put into some kind of a shape or something could be put in there. I think Rick has some information about. Did you talk to the applicant about what they might be thinking of putting in there versus?
Well, let me go over all the information that was submitted, commission's concerns and how the application got revised. Okay, because it's important.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, the application came in for the removal of 109,000 cubic yards, of which 108,000 would be removed for reset. Approximately 1,000 cubic yards will be used on site for grading purposes. The proposed finished grade at that time was 422 to 424. It was anticipated that the excavation needed to go beyond the two-year period. Export truck activities will travel down Gardner Road to Pepper Street and be restricted to the hours of 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. with activities occurring only during Monday through Friday. The applicant requested the following waiver. Project proposes onsite material crushing and processing, otherwise not permitted. Site is adjacent to the scenic road. The application has received a wetlands approval. Commission requested and the applicant provided a blasting plan. Commission has determined the need for the applicant to provide daily records of material excavated. And the applicant shall maintain a daily log of all exported material and provide said log quarterly to the zoning enforcement officer. Commission requested and the applicant agreed not to set up a scale house. Commission requested and the applicant agreed to reduce the excavation from 109,000 cubic yards to 81,700 cubic yards and to complete the activity within two years. So the waiver still is requested for the processing and screening. Applicant has agreed to limit the hours from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. Monday through Friday, no weekends, no holidays. The engineer consultant is recommending a $45,000 site bond. And as indicated, a daily log has to be maintained and a quarterly report submitted to the zoning enforcement officer. So we're down to 81,700 cubic yards with the elevation raised for two pads for a industrial development. It is zone industrial, as the commission is aware. There has been discussion of alternative land use, which would be down the road, but clearly the site has to be prepared to those elevations. And inland wetlands wants that, you know, the, all of the debris and stumps that were pushed into and adjacent to the wetlands area. They've also asked for a replanting plan that are wetlands acceptable.
Okay, so.
So that was what was submitted, what the commission requested they acquiesce to, and that's what's on the table.
So we're going to discuss this now?
Yeah.
Rick, what's going on over there right now?
Nothing, no complaints.
No complaints? Have you been by there?
No complaints.
Have you been by that site?
Yes, last week I was by the site, nothing.
I've been by there today.
I didn't go today.
Where did all that fill come from? All that dirt?
I.
There's piles and piles of dirt over there. I go down that road all the time. There's blasting mats now on the property. A bunch of activity over there. They ain't even got a permit yet.
This is quite concerning.
That's what I'm saying to you, but was there piles of dirt there when you went there?
No.
There's loads of dirt over there now.
That stockpile was removed, you know, for Pepper Street.
Oh, Rick, this is a dish. Yeah, I just saw this today.
I'm not aware of that. Yeah, it's quite concerning.
Is there snow on it?
No.
It's pretty fresh. But I went by there today and looked, and I said, where did all that dirt come from? I, it's just like, I mean, there must be a lot there. But were you there last week?
Yes.
I didn't see that. Did you see the blasting mats out front?
No.
Sounds like they're getting ready. What do you think, Bob?
Well, I mean, I think we've all come to the conclusion that this, you know, kind of feels like a quarry, you know? And we've been down this road of properties in town before, and by, you know, the initial intention to put a scale on site and. I don't know. I feel like we're going to be looking at another application to extend it two years from now, a year from now, whatever we allow them to do. I'd like to see an end game with the project, to be honest with you, not just an excavation, filling.
It has to go step by step. You know, they do have to prepare the site before they come in with an SEP. I'd like to see it cleaned up, to tell you the truth, and.
Can I ask why?
Because it's a mess.
I hear it's a mess, but if, let's say it gets cleaned up. Say it gets cleaned up. What, what are you going to put there? It's a scenic.
Small apartments and maybe condos or something. It's a perfect place for that.
It's industrial. Then they're going to have to come in and change zone?
Yes, I wouldn't mind that.
Your zone changed.
Yeah.
It's more appropriate to, residential.
But they were talking about.
That street.
When Chris was here with Solly, he was talking about conceptual two buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, two industrial.
And it's a conceptual buildings. I'm getting tired of conceptual builds.
Yeah, because I am not in favor of.
Trying to go to take a piece of property and say that we're going to get it leveled out and we're going to put conceptual builds. We've done that before, and it turned into be a disaster. We've done it again on Main Street that were, that got torn up over there. It's wide open out.
Well, Leon, what would you do if you owned that property?
Frank, I mean, if I was going to develop. I was going to not buy it. I would have to, I would want to develop the property.
Like the guy that came in.
What do you do first?
You come in with a complete plan. You don't come in with a conceptual building plan or a conceptual.
How do you get somebody to?
Because why? Because this commission, most, when Bill was here, he wouldn't even allow that to go on. I know that for.
Allow what?
For conceptual things.
Well, nothing conceptual is being approved. That's the thing. We got to remember that. I understand the example, is it conceptual? I don't like this. This is being approved solely because whatever they show conceptual, you're right.
And we've had incidents where it has turned in.
And you can't hold. We need to not, we shouldn't even consider, they can show it, they can do it, but you need, we all need to realize it's bullshit. I mean, until it's actually a plan in front of us, we shouldn't even consider that. So the question is looking at.
Father left it, he's deciding his will, if he needs to. I'm going to the grave and slapping him. I would leave it until I want to develop it.
Like 127 Main. That could have been, that could have become a huge quarry as well.
Right.
But we approved excavation and fill first with conceptual stuff.
No, I understand that, but they, no, 27, 27 Main is a whole different ballpark. That went through court and everything like that. We couldn't do anything with that. That's a whole different.
Oh, it was a down, but we're four and one or whatever, we're leveling out.
Right, we're leveling out. That had nothing to do with, that went to court. That was fought in court. It got lost in court and they won in court, and that's what happened with that.
Well, 4 Main Street is more similar.
What, 4?
4 Main Street is not similar. Yeah. Dumping ground and they cleaned it up.
Yeah, we're not talking.
What I'm saying, that was at court before, that's why.
Yeah, that was court ordered.
Court order. That's why that was leveled out.
No, I was talking about.
But I'm saying, I know we talked about, I'm saying, but that's why that, but the problem I have is that already, already, before they even got a permit, there's, why is fill there? You're not supposed to bring anything.
Leon, you didn't answer my question. What would you do?
That's an enforcement issue.
What would you do?
If I own a piece of.
What's a reasonable thing to do with that?
It's so, everybody comes in and says, well, I want to level the property. I want to detree the property so I can make it more desirable.
Trees there now.
Well, no, I understand that, but I'm saying to you, I got all that. There is none there because he didn't do what he was supposed to do in the first part. Carter, where we gave him a cease and desist, and that's what happened there. The same thing happened here that could have possibly happened.
Let me pose this. Let me pose this. If Leon gets that property, he's a mechanic.
But what would you do with it if you got it?
I'm, okay, first things first.
You don't want to keep it. You want to, you want to make some money off it, you want to.
Well, I'm not, I'm not in the construction business, right? So, so I see that this property is a construction company's owning it, and they're going to mine it.
They're mining it, it's basically what I have. I'm just saying.
To monitor this property to get.
They want 109,000 cubic yards, and I guarantee you 109,000.
What would you do?
And the thing is, is that, I understand. I wouldn't do anything. There's a lot of work that needs to be done there. Absolutely.
I would leave it. There's too much work to be done there.
Yeah, but you're going to get taxes on it.
Raw land taxes are nothing. What about proposing a complete plan?
Well, that's what I'm saying, but there is no.
Well, I know that, but I'm saying if you were to intend to develop this parcel, you could submit a complete.
Required.
It's not required, but it goes a long way with a, with a, with a commission that has seen quarries pop up all over town and where we have trouble monitoring. Listen, in a week, in a week, Rick, who does a great job, goes there and it's fine. Leon drives by and there's piles of dirt. This all happened in a week. What could happen in a week if you got crushers, excavators and all that kind of stuff there? We can't monitor that. We can't. I'm a no. So whatever you guys discuss, when we get to the vote, let me know. I am not an approval of this at all.
The other thing is, I mean, we'd like to get them to clean it up. In other words, get their stumps out of there, move this stuff away from the upland review area.
Isn't that in violation now anyway?
Yeah.
So they have to do that anyway. They have to do that anyway.
What incentive is there to do that if you can't do anything else? And then Leon's going to drop by, he's going to see him pulling his stumps. I was going to say, well, what's going on here?
Oh, they're pulling the stumps out.
No, it's just that the concern I have is, like I said, okay? It's not that we haven't had this problem before. We've had this problem, okay? And the thing is, is we come in with a plan, like Rob says. You give me a plan, you say, okay, we want to blast this, get the rock out of here, excavate it, get rid of it. Like they're doing the big projects in Shell where they built all these places. They built, they built all these big places. They came in with a plan. They came in with the excavating plan. They came in with a plan to put a building up. They did all that. All those properties that are on Shelton, on that main road, on Bridgeport Avenue, that's how those properties got developed.
To put two buildings, we saw those two.
No, there's not a plan. It's a proposal, Mike.
Mike, you son.
Proposal, yes.
His son.
What happened?
Well, what do you want, an SEP?
Listen, I propose some.
It would make us feel better.
Listen, I propose to, I propose to put 10 chickens in, and I got a bunch of rubber duckies in my backyard. It's the same thing as you saw with those buildings. It's the same thing. Nothing. You saw nothing.
That's what happened up on, that's what happened up on.
The problem that we had with the quarry was really our problem because we didn't police it. We didn't look for the report for 10 or 15 years.
According to the engineer, he was submitting them.
Yeah, and wherever they sat over in the land use department, we didn't look at that.
You had, there was bigger issues with that than, there was bigger issues.
That never came in front of the commission for that problem. That was held in the land use office.
That wasn't a commission.
And so that's what, like I said to you, not that it happens with Rick, but that happens. Okay, and it does happen.
It does.
And like I says to you before, that's why this commission has to put all the safeguards in it to make sure that we're not going to get into that point.
And I think that's what we're doing here, what we require on regular reports, regular inspection.
We did, we require, like I said before, we require that at that other place. Never, never.
Mike, can I make a suggestion?
No. He was handing them in, no one ever looked.
No, 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 that's not what happened with that. Solly wasn't hired as engineer anymore, and then that went fine.
No, 15, 10, 15 years ago.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm talking about. When it was first violated, but he didn't get, sometimes that he wasn't, he wasn't.
Mike, can we?
Safeguards in here.
Rick wants to make a suggestion.
Yes.
I didn't know about the new fill. Let staff find out. Let's table action on this and I'll have a full report in two weeks.
All right.
That is very concerning.
But I mean, I just would like everyone to think about what they would do with this.
No, 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 and I have that. So Mike, my problem is, is he's not supposed to bring anything in there. Now, I saw that today. I actually just, listen, if it's kind of.
Hold on a second. Why do I have to think about, why do I have?
No, it's not legal, but I'm saying to you, but I'm saying to, but when I went by today, I saw these big clouds of dirt. I'm like, what, where is these? Because he's supposed to be taking stuff not out, not bringing in. So on the calculation of me, that maybe you're bringing that in because you could take out more material and fill that in, and then it would be at that certain point. So, you know what I'm saying? Because why would you be doing that?
Listen, I'll tell you guys a quick story. I have a piece of property in Walcott, okay? And you say, what would you do with that property? I proposed to that town 10 different things, and I don't have to do any excavation, and I don't have to bring crushers, I have to bring nothing.
Just a building.
I just have to put something up, and there's, and there's denials all over the place. So I can't go by the thought of, well, what would you do? Or what would you do if you got that property?
I don't know. I think that's the James, there's something. And then once it's ready for a building, look for an option. Or.
Whatever.
Anyway, this is our new development.
Disaster.
We'll table it some next meeting.
Another disaster for two weeks.
All right, so.
Kick the bucket down the road.
We have pending meeting minutes from 11923. We have the minutes?
I don't have any minutes.
I don't have any minutes.
Table that.
Table that too. Some minutes here, but. Table it.
Planning.
Table them all.
All right, reports. Anybody have any reports?
I do.
Go ahead.
I would like everybody to know that Friday is Leon's birthday.
That's fine. Thanks.
Our senior member is going to be 66 years old.
Exactly it.
A big boy.
Thank you.
Boy, two hours till you're 66.
That's fine. An hour and a half.
That's my only report for today.
All right, I got a question.
Is it a report?
I talked to Rick about it, and he told me to talk to you about it, about 824 referrals that came for.